Okay.
Alright. Everybody ready? It is now seven o'clock, August twenty-six, twenty-twenty-one, and I call this meeting of the Bellevue Planning Commission to order. Please join me with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do a roll call.
Mr. Casey?
Here.
Mr. Perrin?
Here.
Mr. Compton?
Here.
Mr. Arnie?
Present.
Mr. Ritz?
Here.
Mr. Ackley?
Here.
Mr. Hankins?
Here.
Ms. Cutsforth?
Present.
Mr. Jacobson?
Present.
This meeting will be conducted according to the Open Meetings Act, location, a copy of which can be found on the back wall of this vestibule. I do, uh... At this time, I would entertain a motion to approve in, um, the approved minutes of the July twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one regular meeting.
Motion to approve is written.
Motion by Ackley, second by Jacobson.
Seven voted yes. Mr. Compton and Ms. Cutsforth abstained.
Real quick, as I forgot to mention, I would, uh, ask that all audience members and commissioners please silence their cellphones at this time. I would now, uh, accept a motion to accept and record all staff reports, attachments, memos, and handouts regarding each application. Uh, staff, is there any updates?
Yes, Mr. Chair. We received two emails on item three A, um, since your packets went out. Those have been provided to the commissioners as part of tonight's record. One from Michelle Foss and one from Matthew Curran, both expressing concerns, um, and questions about the proposed plating and zoning. Also, I just want to let the audience members know, Agenda Item Three E, which is a Spring Ridge preliminary plat and rezoning request, the developer has, uh, requested a continuance to the October meeting. Um, in my discussions with Mr. Sudbeck, he intends to revise the plat and the site plan, so while the public hearing is listed on the agenda, we can still have it, but I just wanted to put that out there for anybody in the audience who is here for that item. Um, really, staff won't have a whole lot to add to the discussion just because the developer is going to come back with a slightly different proposal. And that is it.
Thank you. Does anybody wish to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept and to record all staff reports, attachments, memos, and handouts regarding each application.
Second.
Motion by C, second by Cutsforth?
All voted yes. Motion carry.
We will now go to the public hearings. I will read each, um, each item into the record and open it up for the public, or ask the staff and the applicant for an update on it. Then I will open up for public hearing, after the which time I'll close the public hearing and open it up for commissioners, um, whatever they wish to speak about. I do, uh, reserve the right to limit everyone to five minutes of speak time, and I have, there is a timer behind you as we have a large crowd tonight. That's to ensure everyone gets his fair chance to talk. Remember that it is, remember to go, apologize, go by the golden rule, treat others as you wish them to be treated. When you do come up to speak, please sign and to the record on the clipboard up there, state your name and address in for the record also. First item, three A, request to rezone lots one and two Whispering Timber Estates, replat seven, being a replat of Lot one oh six Whispering Timber Estates. Lot one Whispering Timber Estates replat six and Lot two A one Fair Hill Edition from AG, RE, and RS dash eight four dash PS to RE and RS dash eight four dash PS for the purpose of existing residential development and small subdivision plat lots one and two Whispering Timber Estates replat seven. Applicants Todd Santoro and Greg Dennis. General location Hickory Circle and Child's Road East. Case numbers S dash two one zero seven dash one nine and Z dash two one zero seven dash one zero.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, due to a conflict, I'm gonna, uh, recuse myself from this first item.
Okay, we will let you know when it, uh, we'll move on to three B. Staff, would you like to, uh, give us an update on this item?
Yes, and first I just want to let the commissioners know, uh, Mr. Santoro's unable to be here this evening due to a death in the family. Um, so that is why he is not here to address the commission. Um, just briefly, the request is for, uh, small subdivision plat and a change of zone. Um, basically not creating any additional residential lots. This is actually incorporating two existing lots into other existing lots. So, we've had a lot of phone calls, um, a lot of questions from the neighbors in regards to what is being requested. I think that there is some confusion that people are assuming that this is creating additional buildable not lots, and that is not the case. Um, with proposed Lot number one, Angela, I don't know if you can pull the plat up for the audience?
Is there any way to put that, the screens up here?
Yep, just, just one moment, we can get that done. Stacy, can you display Angela's screen on all of the TVs, please? So, proposed Lot one would be, um, combining a lot that is out there now with Mr. Santoro's existing residential lot. That lot is already developed with his house, with his principal residence, so there would not be, he would not be able to further develop that property under this request. Proposed Lot two is taking a non-conforming ag lot and it is adding it on to an existing platted lot. That currently is a vacant lot, it's undeveloped, but it's not adding any additional undeveloped property into the mix. So, I just kinda wanted to clarify that for everybody. Um, like I said, I know that there's been a lot of confusion as to this request. Um, with that, we can turn it over and, uh, do the public hearing.
Alright, does anybody wish to speak, um, on the record for against the item? Come up to the podium.
Yeah, I live on, uh, Moore Drive. I mean, it's not clear to me exactly what's...
Can you say your name for the record?
Gallagher.
And then can you, uh, sign in?
I will.
Thank you.
I think if you could just use the pointer to show exactly which lot is being expanded, it's impossible. Okay, so the first lot is in blue, where he's already living, you mean?
No, no, um, Angela, can you put? Okay, so Angela, could you, on Mr. Santoro's existing lot? So, where she has the pointer there right now, that would be combined with the southern portion of, or southern piece that's outlined in blue. So, maybe if you can toggle back and forth between those two. That southern portion, south of Child's Road, would be combined with Mr. Santoro's existing lot. So, that actually takes what could potentially be a buildable lot out of play. So, where there could be a residence right now, under this scenario, if it's added to his existing lot, that's not going to be the case any longer. And then, the lot to the north, where Angela has the cursor now, that would be combined with the property that is adjacent to it to the east. I don't know if you can click that one on blue to the east, the Dennis's property?
So, just for clarification, that's an, uh, uh, expansion of an existing lot?
Correct, correct.
What, what, what was the first one? I was not clear, the south?
That one right there where she has the cursor would be combined with Mr. Santoro's existing acreage that he has south of Child's Road.
Which is where?
Right there.
Those two will be combined.
These two will be combined.
Yeah, but are you, uh, is he anticipating building property there?
No, no, no. So, he already has an existing house on that property, right where the cursor is?
Yeah.
So, once he combines that with that existing house, that lot?
Yeah.
He can't further develop it.
Okay, yeah, I know that house, I know exactly where it is. So, there are no new houses, please.
Correct, not, right, yes, correct. Under that scenario, there would not be another new house there.
Excellent.
Alright. Come on up.
Uh, I'm Rodney Eaton. I live on thirteen twenty Camp Gifford Road. Um, I just got one question. What you've spoken to has really helped understand this, but it seems like, reading this letter I got, uh, Lot one is also being rezoned to say residential estates, and it was originally, uh, residential existing housing only.
So, if I might, Angela, can you turn the zoning map on for me? When we combine those properties, they have to be under the same zoning. Mr. Santoro's property is currently zoned RE, that other chunk to the south of Child's Road, that has the same zoning. So, that zoning on the south side of Child's is really not going to change. It will all be zoned residential estates, which is basically an acreage. It's a single-family residential zoning minimum of one acre. Now, to the north, there, where Angela has her cursor, there's a non-conforming ag lot. Um, the Dennis's who live adjacent to that property are going to combine it with the lot they own. Since those properties are going to be combined, they're, the request is to make that non-conforming ag lot, when it's combined with the other lot, that will all be zoned RS eighty-four PS, which is what the existing houses in that area are already zoned. Again, single-family residential.
Yeah, I understand that one completely. We actually talked to Dennis's outside. So, the designation on Lot one is not changing?
Correct.
Okay, that's all I...
Correct. The legal description is, because it'll all be one lot. Um, so, uh, the request gets a bit confusing, um, but we have to legally map it out that way for the ordinance, because there's a change in property lines.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, I'm Megan Curran, and I'm at sixteen oh eight Chapet Drive. Um, I'll fill this out in just a second. Um, my concern is, is that, um, even though we're rezoning those two pieces to be the same, if he was to sell or in the future decide to build on that area, would he be allowed to? With the rezoning?
No, it doesn't change what he already has or what he could do currently. So, like I said, by combining it into one lot, it actually takes a lot out of the mix that could potentially be developed separately of his property now.
Okay, because in Lot one where he is now, there is a storm drain that keeps the floodwater from the rest of us.
There's several easements in that area. We realize there's a drainage issue. That's part of the reason why he's taking that other lot out of the mix.
Okay, so we've, never in the future that can ever be built on?
Never say never, but if somebody wanted to change it, they would have to come back through and do this process. And that would not be something that I would support, just because of the drainage in the area. Obviously, I won't always be here, but that's something that would have to be looked at. So, if it were to be subdivided, rezoned in the future, that would all have to go through the public hearing process, and neighbors would again be notified.
Okay, thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Gary Jacobs. I have, uh, the lot at fourteen eleven Child's Road East, which is adjoining that open space. Uh, we were the second occupant to go into the Whispering Timbers Estate. At that time, and I forget the name of the gentleman who was doing the developing, assured us that all the open space would remain the same. It would never be redeveloped. After he sold all of the lots, he went in and made a proposal to rezone and add additional houses. We had a representative, an attorney, Mr. Felix Zanuski, who represented the neighborhood, and it was blocked. My concern is that this is going on and on and on. I realize maybe members of this board don't have anything to do with it, but how long are we gonna have to fight this? You know, you set something that it's never going to be developed, and yet, years down the road, maybe it's because you hope that while people move out, they're not familiar with the situation, now we're gonna come in and we're gonna redevelop it. And, you know, that has been since nineteen eighty-five, and this will be the third rezoning, and it doesn't make any difference to me. When you take an action, how can we be assured that that action is gonna hold? Or in one or two or three years down the road, are you gonna come in and propose a rezoning again? You know, and I'm not pointing the finger at any of members of the board now, but I don't trust you. And I'm keeping my eye on it as long as I can to make sure it doesn't happen. And when we're assured that it's not going to be developed, and years down the road, how many times have they attempted to develop it? Very frustrating.
Uh, Gallagher, if I could follow up with another question, if he's simply in the south lot expanding his house, what on earth does he need all this other territory for?
He already owns that property.
Right, but he, I mean...
He doesn't need that territory, but like I said, this is taking a lot out of play, out of development.
Right, I understand.
And I, I, I wanted that to happen because of the drainage issue that's in the area. So, under this scenario, at least for the time being, we don't have to worry about additional development.
So, is the drainage area in that southern lot his responsibility now?
Part of it could be homeowner's responsibility, part of it could be city responsibility because of the easements, because of the infrastructure that runs through there. So, I can't probably specifically answer that. It probably depends on exactly where it's at on the property and what the situation is.
Well, I know exactly where I live, right at the top of Moore Drive, and I can tell you water comes down that hills last week.
Yep.
So, is that his responsibility now? He's owned the land?
Correct. I can have Public Works look at that, that specific issue, and figure out whether that's his or whether that's a city responsibility.
And with all, uh, one other point, with all the storms we had in the last month, we've had quite a lot of big trees fall in that area that he now owns. So, is that his responsibility?
The trees would be his responsibility if they're on his property.
Could you ask him to turn up with a chainsaw? Thank you.
Yes.
Good evening. I'm Dave Koke, K O U K O L. I live at thirteen thirteen Camp Gifford Road. And I was here in twenty nineteen when it was discovered by me that Mr. Santoro bought all this land from the city for apparently twenty thousand dollars. It was a surprise to me. He had made a commitment at that hearing that it would never be sold off and developed. I think that's, uh, my, I'm here because I want to get some assurances also that it won't be. I'm still incredibly puzzled by the fact that this greenbelt area was ever sold in the first place. And the, the, the question was raised at that time, perhaps it wasn't relevant, but I was directed to some other department. I didn't bother to follow up because it was a done deal. So, what, what I've, I think what I see here tonight is, um, the Dennis's want to buy that, want to have that parcel rezoned. And, and then we have the Santoros. So, there's really two issues here. Is that a fair way of looking at it, or is this all in one package deal?
This is a package deal under the proposed plat. So, ultimately, what will happen is the Dennis's will own the property adjacent to them. Mr. Santoro will continue to own that property right there that Angela's pointing at, and that will be combined with his lot. So, you will have two different ownerships on this plat.
Okay. I know from my perspective, I don't have an objection to the Dennis's, uh, provided that when they eventually sell or transfer the title of that property, that that extra lot that's now being incorporated in their existing lot, that that won't be subject to development. Is there any way that this commission can give us that assurance?
Legally, I don't believe so. Um, you know, if it's, if it's a developable lot, they can meet all the guidelines of the city, all the codes, all the zoning regulations, all the design standards. I don't know how we would prohibit them from building on their property, from a legal standpoint.
And my, my understanding from the Dennis's is that they don't plan to develop it. It's treed, it's a hilly area. But, of course, new owners can do different things, and I think the, the point was brought up by the other gentleman. How many times do the neighbors have to come back and, and show up to protect their rights to what's already been set? And I, I recognize that people have the right to, to do and develop their property as they see fit, but there are certain restrictions that could be placed on property to, to eliminate this desire to get things changed or the concern about things getting changed. And I was wondering if this commission has any input to put any restrictions on that property?
Here's what I would point out. The Dennis's already own a lot that could be developed, so this doesn't change anything. This increases the size of that lot, but again, if they met all applicable codes, zoning regulations, design guidelines, they could build on that lot right now as it is existing. So, this is not adding a lot into play.
Okay. And with respect to this, the Santoro property, uh, it was brought up about trees needing to be cut, and I think my recollection from the last meeting, for context, is that Todd and his wife bought the property because they were upset because the city wasn't maintaining it. The city wasn't coming in and clearing it, and so he made some complaints and inquiries and, and they said, "Well, if you don't like that, come buy it," and so he did. And then I hear from someone in the audience tonight that he hasn't been maintaining it. So, my question, couple of questions along those lines are that, what, what does this commission do, if anything, to require the Santoros to maintain that big parcel of property they have? So, I'll ask that question first.
This commission wouldn't have any responsibility in that. Um, that would be a code enforcement issue. So, if there are existing violations on the property, and that's determined by a city official through probably code enforcement, then those would be dealt with accordingly, but this commission would not be the body to enforce that.
Alright. So, my general understanding with respect to the, the larger parcel of land is that it wasn't developed because it really is not developable, and, and it's also part of what I think was referred to earlier as a greenbelt. Uh, I think you've even mentioned that there are some drainage issues at the bottom. Uh, I know Fontaineau Forest, a number of years ago, encouraged landowners around the area to build rain gardens to help minimize the erosion. And, and the city no longer has control over this property to utilize that in, in a way to minimize the flow of water through this area. Uh, what is going to be done, if anything, to require the landowner to address erosion, water drainage? And, uh, and what is this commission going to do to ensure that that's done with respect to any easements or any other points like that?
The five minutes is up, so I will, I'm gonna ask Tammy, you know, to answer, respond, but then ask you to sit down so I can open it up for other people that want to speak on or for the record.
Very well.
I would say, again, that's not an issue for the commission to enforce. Um, that would be something that our public works engineers would have to look at. And if the property owner has culpability, that would be dealt with, again, through the city. Um, otherwise, if it's a city issue, then our public works department would spearhead that and take care of that as well.
But if I might have one follow-up, if, if
I gotta...
The city, if the city engineers haven't been consulted about drainage and making sure that that's an issue, is this commission comfortable with what it's proposing?
There's no new development, there's no change.
Well, we can limit the commissioners to the commission time. I just want to keep this as I'm supposed to in the order when people are supposed to talk. Um...
Okay, thank you.
Tammy, if you want to, uh, speak on that just in general, or if we want to wait till the commission time to address that?
I would just echo, again, this plat doesn't change any of that. It doesn't change what enforcement would need to happen. It doesn't change what rules, what regulations, what city codes are pertinent now, and what would be pertinent after this plat.
Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak?
So, I just have one more question. So, if this doesn't change anything and this doesn't make, you know, you can't develop or anything, then why the change in, in the, uh, zoning of it?
This action was really initiated because the Dennis's expressed interest in purchasing the property adjacent to their house. Um, it's currently a landlocked, non-conforming ag lot. Um, if they wish to purchase it, the cleanest way to do that is to make it part of their existing property. To do that, we don't want to create a lot with two different changes, with two different zonings on it, so it needs to be consistent. Um, so, that's really the driving force behind it. This is a bit unique, because as you can see, um, the current lot, which is Lot two A one Fair Hill Edition, those two green, or blue boxes technically represent one parcel. Back in the day, when that development was done, we would never let this happen now, but you have one lot that was split by right-of-way and development. So, you have a really unusual, non-conforming situation. So, in order for Mr. Santoro to split the property legally and sell it off, he had to bring both portions of that parcel into the same plat, which, like I said, I was in favor of, because then he is going to incorporate the southern part into his existing property, and it really cleans up and brings a non-conforming situation into conformance. So, it, it cleans up an issue that should have been cleaned up decades ago, when all that development was done.
So, basically, this just makes it easier for y'all to see the zoning issues, but it makes it more complicated for us because we're worried about our green space.
And, like I said, I, this plat really doesn't change anything that could be done currently, other than it takes that portion south of Child's Road out of play. You know, whereas Mr. Santoro could attempt to develop that now, if he combines that with his existing lot, he won't be able to do that because he already has a primary structure on the property, and that zoning only supports a single-family residence.
Okay, so the only reason that the Davises and the, and the Santoros are doing this together is because that lot is actually one lot?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Carrie Jacobson, I do have one other question. Is this meeting going to be documented so we can get copies of it?
Yes, minutes are taken and they will be on file in perpetuity. So a minute record is established and those are available. A draft is available ten days after the meeting.
Ten days after.
Ten business days.
Who do we contact to get that?
The planning department.
Okay.
And we also post them online.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Debbie Eaton. I live at thirteen twenty Camp Gifford Road. And the way you have it right now where the part that is on this, what looks like the bottom side of that photo, if that is combined with the rest of Mr. Santoro's property, what is, and this is greenbelt area, what is to keep him? Because if you read your small print on the letter that you sent us, it says that there is not only use for cable boxes and all of that, which is already on his property behind our houses, but it's also allowing streetlights to be put up there. So what's to keep him from putting a road up from Child's up behind the houses, behind Moore and on Camp Gifford on the, the other side? And have him put a five-car garage in there?
There is no easement shown on the proposed plat for any kind of private street. There would have to be an easement for a private street. So there is not anything shown on the plat. The language you're referring to is standard language in regards to utility easements. As you mentioned, there's probably existing utility easements that they're accounting for. And that's pretty standard language on any dedication that's required as part of the plat. Could he potentially put up a detached garage? Yes. But he'd have to meet the zoning regulations. And this plat doesn't change that. He could put up a, he could put up a garage now on that property if he wanted to, if he met the guidelines.
Well, right now he really doesn't have access to the property because I don't think it's really wide enough to get a road up from his house up to behind where our houses are. Where once he has possession of that other piece of property, then he'll have full access.
He already has possession of that property. So he already owns that property, so this doesn't change anything. If he wanted to drive through that property now, we would get after him because you can't drive on grass, but he, he owns that property now.
Hmm, so you really don't care if people's houses get flooded then? It's about basically what you're saying?
I'm not saying that at all. What I'm saying is that lot will never be able to be developed exclusive of his other lot. Once that's combined with his existing lot, that takes that off the table. It actually helps the area because that portion of the lot can't be developed as an additional single-family residential lot.
No, not as a single-family house, but he can still put up a massive garage back there.
Not necessarily because of the drainage pattern that's over there and because of the easements that are in place. So I would not necessarily say that's a true statement because you can't build an easement and you can't negatively impact the drainage. There's already codes and ordinances that are in place to prevent that. And he would have to get a building permit to do that. So those are all things that would be reviewed.
I hope.
Eric, what's your function?
My function is chair.
You're what?
I'm the chair, just kind of keep the-
What's your job title? I mean, I came in here and you started talking. We have no idea who you are. I don't have any idea.
I'm chair of the planning commission. You mean in my private life or here?
Yeah.
In my private life, I work for a construction company.
Okay, great, super. Uh, my name's Clayton Dunn. I live at eight zero six Cole Road uh, in Bellevue. I have a couple of questions. This benefits the city also, does it not, uh, for this, uh, being included into the tax base from agricultural into uh, residential? Doesn't that affect the person who's by, who has a property? Would their taxes go up quite a bit?
Fortunately, I can say that I have no control over the appraised value of the land. That would be up to the assessor's office, so I can't speak to how-
Isn't that part of your job to develop different areas for the city?
But this isn't-
Is not your job?
Not necessarily. Uh, my job is to do, look at plating, zoning and permits. So in regards to this, my concern is that the regulations are being followed from the subdivision regulations and the zoning ordinance perspective.
So is anybody there can tell me that my taxes won't go up because that property's been rezoned to, uh, residential?
Most all of the property is already zoned residential. There's a non-conforming ag lot. Only the assessor's office would be able to speak to how that valuation of that property is going to change once it's incorporated into the Dennis's lot and rezoned. But otherwise, zoning is not going to change on that southern piece south of Child's Road. That already has a residential estate zoning.
Are the representatives for Mr. Santori here?
As I previously mentioned, Mr. Santoro had a death in the family, so he's unable to be here.
Okay, does everybody realize he's a general contractor and has his fingers in a lot of pies in developing areas like this? No?
Nope.
You need to look into it then. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak on the record for or against this item? I'm not seeing anybody, so I'm going to close the public hearing and turn it over to the commissioners. Commissioners, questions, thoughts?
I guess from my perspective, everything that's been presented, we're actually making it less likely for development to occur. So I'm not sure what the thinking was of the neighborhood, or maybe it was mostly misunderstanding or not, not, uh, or wanting to be informed as to what's going on, but it's less likely for development to occur with these various lots being joined together. As far as the ag going to different zoning, that's because when it's being combined with the other lot next to it, they have to have the same zoning. There's nothing, nothing being done there that's notorious. Now, if someone wants to come in the future and whether they want to rezone this property or any other property, you know, every generation has a different idea of what they want to do. As Ms. Palm indicated, and sir, I guess to your point that this guy's a developer, oh, if he is, he's doing the worst job ever of development because he's combining lots and limiting himself to one house. If he's actually going to develop, he would be coming in to do a replat and create numerous lots, and that is not what he's doing. So whether he wants to do that in the future, he could certainly do that, but he'd have to file an application and go through public hearing again. For this matter, on this evening, he's combining lots and he's already got a residence there. There's nothing more he can do on that for residential development. Again, whether his successor does something different or wants to do something different, they would have to come to this body. As to the lots to the north, combining those, they're going to be limited to one residential structure. Again, I would think that would give you some comfort as opposed to currently you have two lots up there. So if you're suspicious of this guy generally, I don't know him, but everything that's being done this evening should give you comfort. So I would be supportive of this because it seems to be addressing a drainage issue that several of you have spoken on. I can't address what's going to happen with trees that have fallen down. I don't know where responsibility starts or stops as to when somebody has to cut a tree on their land versus they have enough land that they can let trees naturally rot. I don't know where that starts or stops, and I don't want to know. And that has nothing to do with our rezoning here this evening. So I'll leave that to somebody to talk to city permits on. But I would be supportive of the applications we have here this evening. And I guess if there's no other questions or comments, I could make a motion to that effect.
Just one thing, Mr. Ackley, if I could. Ms. Palm, would you just address the letter we received from Fontaineau Forest? Obviously, that's a, a big player in the Bellevue community, right? We want to protect that. And there were some concerns about, uh, new development causing erosion and siltation and some of those things. And I think we've talked about that. Would you just so make sure we address that concern?
Absolutely. So, uh, the email came from Mrs. Foss, who is employed by Fontaineau Forest, again, pointing out the drainage issues that exist in the area. When I received her email, I responded it to her and kind of explained, again, what we've talked about this evening, that this is not creating any new additional buildable lots. She replied back, "Thank you." Um, that cleared up a lot of confusion and she left it at that. So I think, again, it's good to point out that yes, there's a drainage issue in this area, but again, no new lots being created.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, I make a motion to approve this application for rezoning and small subdivision plat based upon conformance with the zoning ordinance or subdivision regulations and comprehensive plan, as well as a lack of perceived negative impact on the surrounding area.
I'll second it.
Motion by Ackley, second by Ms. Cuthbert.
Eight voted yes. Michael Perrin, um, abstained. Motion carried.
This item will go in front of the city council for public hearing on September twenty-first. Does someone want to give, yeah?
I just would like to say one thing, if it's okay.
I, I gotta keep the night moving just because I got, uh, four, uh, five more items to get through and apologize for this. Moving on to item three B, request to declare as blighted and substandard. Lot one, college apartments addition. Applicant Stella Realty LLC. General location, four hundred West nineteenth Avenue. Case number E C D dash five one. Staff, any update, or could you give us an update on this?
Yes, this is a request for, to declare blighted and substandard Lot one, college apartments addition. Lot one, college apartment additions is located between Madison Street and Wayne Street and just north of Mission Avenue. Um, the property is approximately four acres and it consists of three buildings that were built in the nineteen hundreds. And that was once used for an apartment complex. The site's currently underdeveloped. It's underutilized. Permits and inspections has had problems with it, um, to include having to red-tag it. So based upon these items, um, the planning department feels that Lot one, college apartments addition meets the statutory requirements to be considered blighted and substandard.
Is the applicant here to speak on this matter?
Thank you, Mr. Chair Brent Beller, uh, one one four zero West Center Road. On behalf of applicant, with me today is Indy Ponbianco, who's with Stella Real Estate. Um, Angela kind of took some of my thunder, but this particular lot has sat this way for a long time. So, um, the developer wants to redevelop it. Obviously, with a development of this size, which we're proposing if we were to be before, uh, again, would be about a hundred and sixty units, market rate, kind of loft-style, one-bedroom units. With that comes about five million dollars of development cost. So, um, obviously, we'd like to take advantage of the tax remit, tax increment financing. The first step for this particular site is to get it in the CRA, which is what we're before you today. I know we always say blighted and substandard when we talk about TIF. That doesn't mean the area surrounding this are, are truly blighted and substandard. We say that because that's what's in the, um, the statute under eighteen twenty-one oh three. But blighted, I'm sorry, substandard is basically a, a building that's fallen into disrepair. And there's, there's a technical definition for it. And blighted is obviously just, there's different statutory requirements. You know, they look at the, the average income, which is here, it's about twenty-six thousand dollars a year if it's below the national average or for the city of Bellevue, I'm sorry. Where our poverty rate is, which for this particular property, it's thirteen point eight percent, so we're below the poverty rate. And then just the, going off the general census, uh, what is the population? And here we've, uh, the last census, there was an increase of eleven individuals. So, um, those definitions are what allow us to kind of satisfy the blighted and substandard definition under Nebraska Statu-, uh, statutory code. And again, we're, we're excited to do this, but before we kind of get too much more, we obviously wanted to be before you to request the CRA designation. So with that, we're here for any questions and we, of course, appreciate the commission's review.
Thank you.
The other thing I would point out for some perspective historically is probably about ten years ago, the city went ahead and blighted the Mission Avenue corridor, roughly one block to the north, one block to the south. This property lies just to the north of that area. So it's just outside of the area that the, the city had previously designated as blighted and substandard. Having said that, this is definitely an area the city would like to see redeveloped.
Open it up to the public for comment. Does anybody wish to speak on the record for or against this item? Seeing no one, I'll close it, public hearing, and open it up to the commissioners. Commissioners?
So a question for staff, kind of off-the-wall question, but do you know how much of the city is currently designated, blighted and substandard? And when does that designation go away? If the area is developed, does, does that designation disappear then?
Why, yes, I do. Know that answer. By statute, we can have thirty-five percent of our city limits blighted and substandard. In regards to what we currently have, we currently sit less than nine percent. We just had an application be approved by city council, but again, we're well below that ten percent threshold. So, um, as far as that blight and substandard designation dropping off, I mean, statutorily, once it's redeveloped, once the TIF redevelopment plan goes through, there's a fifteen-year timeline. By definition, I don't, it basically stays blighted and substandard. But once it's been designated as such, but through the redevelopment, then, um, that's the process that would be considered redeveloped.
Thank you.
I guess from my perspective, it meets the standards for blighted and substandard. The only thing I would preview, I would assume you'll follow up, Mr. Beller, with a redevelopment plan at some point. And when I see the, the, uh, land acquisition costs of two million dollars for this, I can tell you I won't be too excited about having taxpayers pay for that high a land acquisition cost when we get to that stage. But I don't know what your TIF eligible increment will ultimately cover, so we'll reserve that for when redevelopment agreement comes through. But that's the only thing that caught my eye in terms of having, uh, that's five hundred thousand bucks an acre. So otherwise, for tonight's hearing, the blighted and substandard certainly fulfills the, the requirements.
Maybe you could, maybe you could address that. I think there's a, might just be a typo, Mr. Ackley, because if you look at the TIF eligible cost on page eight, it actually shows seven hundred and eighty thousand. I know it's the same thing. In the, in the body of the language you're referring to, it does say two million, and then in the actual TIF eligible, it says seven hundred and eighty. So it's a little bit better.
We'll see what the redevelopment plan comes through.
I'll, I'll clarify. I look forward to be in front of you with an actual redevelopment plan and, and Todd's right. It is seven hundred and eighty thousand is the acquisition. So that is a typo, um, which we probably need to catch for city council.
So to be clear, this is an application just to declare this as blighted and substandard. It's not a TIF application. There's nothing else on this.
That's correct. This is just the first step in the process. If the property is declared blighted and substandard by city council, then I assume Mr. Beller will be presenting me with a redevelopment plan that will then move forward from there.
Alright, my next question is, uh, if we declare this as blighted and substandard, and it's kind of goes to Mr. Casey's question, and we don't do a TIF plan, not redevelopment, does it just stay in perpetuity as blighted? Or does it ever fall off?
It would stay as blighted and substandard.
Okay.
Please, uh, Chair, I would like to make a motion.
Mr. Jacobson?
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to recommend we declare as blighted and substandard Lot 1 of the College Apartments Edition, based on the designation analysis by the Planning Department, that it meets the statutory requirements of blighted and substandard.
Motion by Jacobson?
Second.
Second by Arnie.
Diane, I haven't had a thing come up to vote yet, so...
Would you like me to vote for you?
That would be fine. I would vote yes.
You would vote yes?
There it just came.
All voted yes. Motion carried.
This item will go in front of the City Council for public hearing, September 21st. Moving on to item 3C. Request to amend Sections 5.27 ML Light Manufacturing and 5.28 MH Heavy Manufacturing City of Bellevue zoning ordinance regarding the addition of recycling collection and processing facilities as a permitted use. Applicants Waste Connections of Nebraska, Inc. and City of Bellevue, case number 164. Staff? Since you're kind of the applicant and...
Yes, I'll speak first. Thanks, Mr. Chair. Basically, this was an application initially brought forward by Waste Connections of Nebraska. The city kind of jumped on this as well. So currently, we have a category for recycling collection and processing facilities, both public and private, that is in our flex zoning. It's listed as a conditional use permit in that zoning district. We incorporated this language into our 2011 zoning ordinance update. In my opinion, it was an oversight not to carry that use into our industrial zoning designations as well. What we are proposing is that the recycling facilities be listed as a permitted use in both ML and MH. When researching it, staff looked at all of our neighboring zoning jurisdictions and what they have in their ordinance. Omaha, Sarpy County, Papillion, all those different agencies. The consensus is they all list recycling facilities as a permitted use. As a matter of fact, City of Papillion has it as a permitted use in their general commercial zoning district even. Also, we look at some of the existing permitted uses in those zoning districts. For example, ML allows for kennels as a permitted use. It allows for food processing plants as a permitted use. It also allows industrial warehouses as a permitted use. In MH, we have items such as junkyards and salvage yards as a permitted use. We also have things like livestock yard as a permitted use, so stockyard. In looking at those, in staff's opinion, an indoor recycling facility is no more offensive than those permitted uses. So that was the other thing that we looked at. Also of note is, if it is listed as a permitted use, there are performance standards that have to be met for our ML and MH zoning districts. Those are listed in a separate section. They are also listed at, as a miscellaneous provision at the end of each zoning district in the ML and MH zone, that those performance standards indicate that facilities such as this, everything would have to be indoor, stored in containers. So for example, you wouldn't be able to have piles of recyclables outdoors. So that also was taken into consideration when this amendment was proposed. With that, I can turn it over to Waste Connections if they have anything to add on their part.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. My name's Steve Mossman, and I'm an attorney with Mattson-Ricketts Law Firm in Lincoln, but happy to be here in Bellevue this evening. I don't think we have anything to add to this, other than we have, would love to talk about the proposal that we're going to be bringing to the city, but I wonder if we could combine that, the public hearing on 4C, or 3C and 3D together, maybe?
No, it's, yeah.
I don't think we have anything to add to this one.
Okay. Opening up to the public hearing, does anybody wish to speak on the record for or against this item? Seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing, turn it over to the commissioners. Commissioners, questions, thoughts?
I guess question for staff, and maybe this does tie in with the next application, but the rezoning for the, the language here to allow this as a permitted use, you're basically going to have a very large building. They drive in, they dump within the building, sort it within the building, bale it, pack it, whatever they do within the building. Semis have to then load in the building, or do they have pallets that sit outdoors once things are bundled, baled? I guess I'm just trying to get a sense of what we're going to be seeing when it's all done, if we allow this as a, again, a permitted use, as opposed to conditional use permit, where we can figure out what impact it has on a neighborhood.
Sure. And perhaps the applicant can come back up and address specifics as to what's being proposed. But from a planning perspective, again, it would have to be indoors. You wouldn't be able to just have piles of cardboard or things outside, could be stored in containers. But from my understanding and speaking with the applicant, this is a clean, more facility, meaning this isn't where trash is going to go. This is where the items that you place in your, is it green cart in Bellevue? Sorry, I'm not in Bellevue. Your green cart would go, so the items that have already been separated, so the items that are not considered trash, your clean plastic, your clean cardboard, things of that nature. But that is all processed indoors. Again, I think the applicant can speak to the specific nature of what they plan to do. The other thing would be, you know, there will be trucks parked on-site. This will be a location where staff will come, park their car, hop in a truck, take off, come back after their route is done. But again, it's not a landfill. No garbage is coming here, no garbage is being processed here. It's all recycling that would be processed indoors in a building.
I guess if you don't mind, Mr. Mossman, I'd like to just get a sense of how it, I'm assuming it's just a giant building. Again, they dump as they go in, somebody loads it, packs it, crumps it up, and we're not seeing it sitting outside once it's bundled or packaged, or tell me how that works.
Well, absolutely. I've actually have the engineer here, so he can answer a lot better than I can. So Jeff Strack, who's the region engineer, is going to come up. And this really leads into the next, the change of zone. But if you want to just give the master plan here, that would be great. And I think you'd answer Mr. Strack's question at the end of that.
Thank you. Jeff Strack, Region Engineer for Waste Connections. Address is 251 Starkey Street in St. Paul, Minnesota. Yeah, the, so, Ms. Palm is correct. The trucks would come back from collecting the singles, or single-sort recycling from residents, and then maybe some cardboard recycling from some commercial. And it gets dumped inside the building, on the tipping floor, and then it's loaded onto some, some equipment. It's, there's people that are hand-sorting, and then there's equipment that's also sorting. And then it ends up making different, separates the things back out. You guys put it all in one, one thing, and then we pay a bunch of people to separate it into multiple things. So you go get, we end up with bales of cardboard that go with the recycle mills to be made into new cardboard. And like aluminum cans to be made into new aluminum stuff again, and glass, and ferrous metal, and then plastic bottles. They, they end up, each, each item gets made into large bales, and then, correct, then you have like a loading dock. Semi-trailer backs up. We put it in the semi-truck, and they haul it away to wherever the next processing facility is going to be.
So from drop-off until it's shipped off again, we never see it outside?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Question for staff again. I guess I'm asking, clarifying, because I'm not quite understand. The ordinance, which is what we're talking about now, or chaining the zoning, or the ordinance is recycling collection processing facility, both public and private, but it doesn't stipulate inside. So what is it that requires?
The performance standard stipulated has to be inside. So there are performance standards that are listed for, specifically for our industrial zoning districts, ML and MH. Those performance standards are in Sections 8.07. Also, that same language is carried over at the end of each of the ML and MH zoning designations. So it's those performance standards that dictate it has to be inside.
Thank you.
Question for staff, just kind of a general thought. Is there an actual definition of recycling in the code? And the reason I ask is that we already allow auto salvage, which is a form of recycling in my mind. Is there an actual definition of recycling?
Yes, we have definition of recycling facility. Shall mean any location where the primary use is where scrap or recyclable materials are stored, bought, sold, accumulated, exchanged, packaged, disassembled, or handled, including but not limited to metals, paper, rags, tires, bottles, and other materials.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioners?
I would make the motion for approval of the amendment as presented.
Motion by Casey? Second by Hankins. Second by Hankins?
Van Horn, if you're waiting on me, I swear it has not come up yet.
Hi. I am, sir. Would you like me to vote for you again?
I would be happy to vote verbally yes.
Thank you. All voted yes. Motion carried.
This item will go in front of the City Council for public hearing on September 21st.
There, it just came up. For the record, I'll vote yes.
Moving on to item 3D. Request to rezone lots 12B and 13C, south of Drainage Ditch Butterfield Subdivision, located in the northeast quarter of Section 10, T13NR13E, Sarpy County, Nebraska. Tax Lot 14, except that part taken for highway right-of-way, and part of vacated state right-of-way in the east half of the east half in the southeast quarter, adjacent to Tax Lot 14. All located in the southeast quarter of Section 10, T13NR13E, Sarpy County, Nebraska, and part of vacated state right-of-way in the southeast quarter of the southwest quarter, west of Fort Crook Road South, located in the southwest quarter of Section 11, T13NR13E of the 6th Prime Meridian, Sarpy County, Nebraska, from FX and BNH to ML for the purpose of light industrial development. Applicant Waste Connections of Nebraska, Inc. General location, Fairview Road and Fort Crook Road South. Case numbers Z-2107-09. Staff, could you give us an update on this?
Sure. These parcels are described property that's bounded to the north by the Papio Creek, to the south by Fairview Road and State Right-of-Way, to the east by Fort Crook Road, and to the west, you have the freeway right-of-way. This property is shown in our future land use map as light industrial. The applicant Waste Connections of Nebraska is requesting a change of zone to light industrial, so therefore, it's in conformance with our future land use map. With a light industrial zoning, there is no site plan approval. Any, any oversight as far as design standards, access, anything like that, will all be done through the building permit process, and will be reviewed at that time. Other than that, the applicant is here and can answer specific requests, or specific questions the commissioners may have in regards to their specific use.
You've got Steve Mossman, again, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. I also have the owner of the property, Pete Chacho. I hope I pronounced that correct. And his attorney, Dean Jungers, are here as well to answer any questions. But I was going to turn it over to Mr. Strack again, and he'll give you the big-picture proposal.
Thanks again. Yes, we're looking to purchase this property to relocate our waste hauling company from, over, over by Werner Trucking to, to this location. So we would be, are building a maintenance shop and office building, and then maybe someday in the future, a recycling facility that we just talked about. It would be like around, around 175 employees would, would be working there. And we are the City of Bellevue's contracted hauler, so we're like in year two of a 10-year agreement. So we see this as a win-win for everybody. So we get closer to one of our biggest customers, and get to have more, have more space than we currently own. So that's kind of the big picture, and I'm here to answer any other further questions.
Thank you. I am going to open it up for the public hearing. If there's anybody that wishes to speak for or against, on the record, on the, on the record for or against this item, please come to the podium. Seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing and turn it over to the commissioners.
I guess question for staff. Would there be any benefit for the applicant combining these parcels into one on a replat in terms of setbacks and whatnot? Otherwise, they have to meet setbacks with each division line?
Yes, I should have mentioned that. So it is the applicant's intention to, once the rezoning is complete, to go ahead and have the property replatted into one parcel, or perhaps two parcels, but it, it will be replatted.
Thank you.
Question for staff. Any concerns related to the traffic in that area? We, of course, have had other concerns related to the intersection there, the congestion that develops, and the access to Normandy Hills.
Sure. And I will say Waste Connections has been very proactive in reaching out to staff and having pre-application meetings, so those are ongoing discussions. I believe it was probably as early as last year that we started having these conversations with them. In regards to the right-of-way, the intersection of Fairview Road and that section of Fort Crook Road South is controlled by the State Department of Transportation. So any change in access than what is currently shown, the property currently has two access points along Fort Crook Road, will have to go through the Department of Transportation. Additionally, the city can require a traffic study or additional engineering information from the applicant prior to the building permit or a part of the building permit process. Long-term, will there be improvements at that intersection? Absolutely. Do we know yet what those might be? Not necessarily. There's several parcels that are into play. There's Mr. Chacho's property. There's the Fuson Arrow property, just to the east of Fort Crook Road. And then you have Mr. Cratchit's property to the south. So that entire area is slated for light industrial development. As such, as we work with developers, as those parcels are looking to be developed, those will be continuing conversations. And at that time, staff, county, state, will all look at potential improvements that will be necessary in that area.
Thank you.
Papillion, excuse me, sanitation affiliated with Waste Connection?
Yes, Papillion Sanitation is doing business as designation, so the official corporation's name is Waste Connections of Nebraska, Inc. It's the same company.
And you mentioned glass recycling. Will Bellevue be able to put glass bottles in their trash in the future?
Well, I don't, I don't know that, so, but some MRFs do recycle glass.
Thank you.
Just a question, do you have any examples, other places we could look at? I'm just, I look at this area as kind of the entrance to Bellevue. I know thirty-four really kind of basically has Bellevue, but just, I mean, I know you say it's all internal, right? But I'm just trying to envision what this building's going to look like with garbage trucks coming in and out of there every day and all of that. Do you have other facilities regionally or nationally that we could see some pictures of, since there's nothing submitted with the packet?
Yeah, we have a facility in the Twin Cities that would be very similar to this, where the hauling company is on one end and the MRF is on another end. So that's Dick's Sanitation in Lakeville, Minnesota. You can, you probably can find, and if need be, we can probably try to find some pictures to provide as well. But yeah, we have other MRFs around the company, around the country, but that's the only, that's the only one I'm aware of where the hauling company and the MRF like coexist.
I would point out too, city has design standards built into the zoning ordinance. There'll be landscaping requirements, there'll be building material requirements. So obviously, the applicant will have to comply with those as part of the building permit process.
Okay, thank you.
Well, from my perspective, it seems like a great use. We're going to bring it into conformance with what we want the comprehensive plan to do, and hopefully this will be a spark to other development there on that corridor for Highway thirty-four. If we can get office building plus the huge warehouse out of it, that's pretty good tax base for county. Obviously Bellevue gets part of that, but that's a lot of people coming into our community for buying gas and groceries and living every day. So I would be supportive of this.
If there are no other comments or questions, I'd be prepared to make a motion. So I move to approve this application based on conformance with the zoning ordinance and comprehensive plan, as well as the lack of perceived negative impact on the surrounding area.
Motion by Cutzworth?
Second.
Second by Arnie? Oh, sorry, Ackley.
For the record, my vote from the last one is still appearing on my screen, Ms. Ball.
Let's see if it changes once. We may have to log you out and log you.
All voted yes, motion carried.
This item will go in front of the City Council on September twenty-first. Onto item three E, request to rezone lots one five four through one nine six, and outlots F through I, Spring Ridge being a plating of tax lot twelve, tax lot thirteen A, lot two, Bohack Edition, and outlot B, Green Meadows, all located in the southwest quarter of section twenty-two, T fourteen N, R thirteen E of the sixth prime meridian, Sarpy County, Nebraska, from AG and BG to RA, BG and RG dash eight dash PS, with site plan approval for the purpose of a single-family and multifamily residential development, and preliminary plats lots one five four through one nine six, and outlots F through I, Spring Ridge, applicant Orchard Valley, Inc., general location, South Twenty-first Street and Gilmore Lake Road, case numbers Z dash two one zero three dash zero two, and S dash two one zero three dash zero five. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As previously mentioned, today, Mr. Sudbeck, the applicant developer, made a request that this item be continued to our October Planning Commission meeting, wants to take some time to address the technical revisions listed in the staff report. Also, it is quite likely he will alter what he has previously presented in the shape of a site plan and plating. So you folks will likely see a little bit different submittal at your October meeting. This is on the agenda for public hearing. We'll go ahead, do the public hearing, but I just wanted to be upfront about Mr. Sudbeck's request. And staff would support the continuance just to allow him time to work out the technical deficiencies.
All right. Opening the public hearing for anyone that wishes to speak on the record for or against this item? Can you call it to the mic for?
Couple of questions. My first question was?
To the mic so that records it for, yeah.
Date your name and address for the record, please.
Dame's Dustin Richard Gerillo. I live at ninety-six oh seven South Twentieth Street. Gilmore Lake's my backyard. So that's why we have a couple of questions. My first question was, is who do I squawk about my taxes going up? That's the only reason why we came here is if they build all this stuff, well, great, wonderful, but when how my tax is going to go up again? We've been in our home for less than two years, and they've raised them twice. My house payment went up two hundred and fifty dollars in less than two years. So I'm assuming I go to the county assessor's office and squawk to them about that. My second concern is, is that we're going to have another drag strip. Twentieth Street basically is the drag strip down in our neighborhood. I can't seem to get anybody to pay attention, especially with all the little kids in our rooms. Are they going to build around us and leave Gilmore Lake alone, or are they going to incorporate us and remove Gilmore Lake?
I can answer that. So yes. Again, I'll tell you what I told the folks earlier. Fortunately, I have nothing to do with the evaluation of your house, so you would need to contact the assessor's office.
That's right, yeah, that'll be our next.
Yeah, ask those questions of them. They're the experts. As far as Gilmore Lake Road, so a little bit of history. Mr. Sudbeck originally had this area, did a preliminary plat and a change of zone request back in twenty fourteen. At that time, that was phases one through four of Spring Ridge. Out there now, you're seeing phases one through three under construction. Even though what is on the agenda right now, the phases four and five were never final platted, they were preliminary platted, that zoning was already approved. As part, as a condition of him doing any construction in phases four or five, it has always been the agreement that Gilmore Lake Road would have to be improved in order for any development in these southern phases to happen.
And that's what we kind of figured. They're going to build back behind there. Gilmore Lake is a dirt road about yay white.
It's terrible. It's terrible. Yeah, no.
And VFW guys down there, I swear to God, they're all either mountain goats or whatever, because I've watched some of these fools try to leave that place at night when they're drunk, and it's hilarious.
Yeah, no, we most definitely, Gilmore Lake has to be constructed, and it has to be improved in order for this to move forward. So what we do to guarantee that is, as the preliminary plat moves through the process, before a final plat's approved, there will be a subdivision agreement that will outline everybody's responsibility, the developer's responsibility, the city's responsibility, timing, what that looks like, what can be constructed when, based upon improvements being done. So originally, Gilmore Lake was supposed to be approved when Spring Creek went in. Unfortunately, Spring Creek, that SID, had some financial issues, and that street obviously never got improved. At that time, the city was kind of between a rock and a hard place. Could we have sued the SID? Sure, but you can't get blood from a turnip. They had no money to do it.
You'll spend more money trying to get money than you will get money.
Absolutely. So over the last ten to fifteen years, what has happened is the city has, Green Meadows to the south has been in the city for quite some time. Spring Creek was recently annexed in the last couple of years, so now it becomes primarily the city's responsibility, along with some assistance from the developer, to improve Gilmore Lake Road. So those conversations have been happening throughout this process. But like I said, that will be formally hashed out in that subdivision agreement, which has to be approved with the final plat, so.
One of our questions is that Maury Road, is there's Maury Road, and then I believe there's Lucille. That's two main roads that come up that go west out of Green Meadows. You can see them right there.
Yes.
We already got fools thinking this place is a drag strip. Well, what we're just concerned with is right there, Maury Road ends at a dead end, right there. So then it goes into where he wants to be. And so is Maury Road going to turn into one of the main access points, or are they going to build that off of someplace else?
So what will happen is, under the current proposal, okay, he is showing access Gilmore Lake Road, Lola Avenue will go through, and then Maury Drive will go through. What will happen is there will be dedicated right of ways, probably to the north, where Lola dumps into. Through the rest of the development, it'll be private streets. Couple of things of note is a traffic study was done back in twenty fourteen. When the developer first came to the city a year ago, our engineers said, hey, you got to update that traffic study. So they did. And the outcome of that traffic study, couple of things, obviously Gilmore Lake Road be improved, which we knew, that was a no-brainer. But there was also a couple of recommendations for improvements along South Twenty-fifth Street. One of those was a southbound turn lane at the intersection of South Twenty-fifth and Gilmore Lake Road be done by twenty twenty-five. Additionally, a northbound turn lane at the intersection of South Twenty-fifth and Maury Drive. So those improvements are all in play as well. That's something that's also going to have to be outlined in potentially subdivision agreement.
Yeah, because Twenty-fifth Street is busy three times a day. It's busy at morning rush, evening rush, and then basically Saturday morning through Sunday night.
Right.
It's a conveyor belt of cars. And that don't bother me none. I'm talking, I'm talking them trying to cut down Twentieth Street in front of my house, trying to get to the new development.
Right. And I understand what you're saying about Gilmore Lake Road. I went down there a few weeks ago, had a deuce a hazard moment. I was not going that fast. But it's washboard, there's drainage issues. So hopefully, what would be a positive outcome is, once it's improved, all that drainage flow has to be accounted for. So you're talking curb and gutter, you're talking storm sewer. Obviously, it all flows downhill. There's going to have to be structures that are part of the infrastructure of this development to contain that.
Yeah, we're just trying to keep the speeders down. We got little kids, and half of them don't pay attention. And they're out on the road, especially on the two curves, as you're coming down Maury and Lucille, those two curves. I mean, they get, we got kids playing there all the time. I dodge and bob and weave them too. I even take a different route now because I just got tired of trying to miss kids all day long. We just don't want anybody getting squashed. That's the main thing.
And hopefully with the improvement of Gilmore Lake, you'll have more folks from Spring Creek that use Gilmore Lake on this, that live on the south side of the subdivision, and that will hopefully alleviate some traffic, because that Gilmore Lake will be built to city standards to handle that traffic coming in and out.
Is Gilmore Lake itself and the VFW, have they moved, or are they going to, they're going to build around the lake?
They will not move as part of this proposal. Mr. Sudbeck has been working with the VFW ever since, you know, twenty twelve. As you can see, Angelo zoom in on the map. I don't know how old that VFW structure is. I'm sure it's decades, decades and decades. But it sits over property lines. A portion of it sits on Mr. Sudbeck's property, so he is working with them. When all of this shakes out, there will be easements in place. It will be cleaned up from a lot line and a plating perspective to allow the VFW to continue doing what they're doing. They're not going to be forced out. But again, you'll have those, you'll have those streets.
And the lake's going to stay put then?
Correct, correct.
Okay, as long as the lake stays put, we just don't want, we just don't want an apartment building right next door to it.
So half that lake sits on VFW property, half sits on Mr. Sudbeck's property, but he, again, is, there will be easements put into place as part of this plat to allow them to keep and maintain that lake.
Good enough. That's all we needed. That's all we're, I'm happy. And last but not least, I should have gotten a real estate law. This is more interesting than fixing cars.
I don't know if that's a compliment or not.
Trust me, it's a compliment. Thank you very much.
All right. Seeing no one else for public hearing, close the public hearing, turn it over commissioners.
I guess question for staff on that gentleman's last comment. Is that something that he talks to the city? They consider traffic calming devices or something? That is a five-block stretch between Maury and Lucille there.
Yeah, we'll look at that. As far as Gilmore Lake Road, no traffic calming has been proposed at this point, but that's something we can take into consideration.
Green Meadows doesn't dump into there anyway, right?
Right. Is Green Meadows going to take on additional traffic? Yes. But again, that's why those improvements are suggested along South Twenty-fifth Street. Traffic study indicates that there's no large, I mean, will there be an impact? Absolutely. But is that street designed to handle the proposed development? Yes, is basically how it shakes out with the recommended improvements along South Twenty-fifth.
So in terms of the recommended holdover, do we have a date certain? Does he want to do that for September twenty-third?
It would be October twenty-eighth is what he's requesting.
I guess I'd make a motion to hold this application over until October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one?
Second.
Motion by Ackley, second by Cutzworth?
All right, Dave, you're my witness here.
Give it a minute, it might pop up. The wifi is slow in here.
My game up right away. I don't know why is it coming up?
I'm a yes, Ms. Van Horn.
All voted yes, motion carried.
This item, this item will be continued to the October twenty-eighth Planning Commission meeting. Moving on to item three F, right? I lost which number I was on. Yep, three F. Request to amend section two point two two definitions, five point two seven ML Light Manufacturing District, five point two eight MH Heavy Manufacturing District, five point three five HCO Highway Thirty-four Corridor Overlay District, and Article Eight Supplemental Regulations, City of Bellevue zoning ordinance regarding solar energy. Applicant, City of Bellevue, case number one six five. Staff, you're the applicant?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. When we did the twenty eleven update, shortly thereafter, we included section eight point oh six in our ordinance requiring, regarding solar panels. At that time, it was just kind of some general language. Obviously, we've seen technology evolve over the last ten years. We always knew, as is the case, the zoning ordinance is a living, breathing document, and at some point that would need to be updated, and we are at that point. So we have seen some of our neighboring counties and cities in the last six to twelve months update their regulations as well. Both planning department staff, as well as legal staff, looked at this. We didn't try to reinvent the wheel. We largely pulled from those existing regulations out there to include Saunders County, Cass County, Sarpy County, City of Gretna. Ms. Curry also did some research nationally, looked at those regulations. So what you're seeing in front of you is kind of a mix of what we thought were the best attributes of those regulations. This is our first run at it. Obviously, we'll have a good discussion tonight about what recommendation you folks have. I would like to move this out of Planning Commission tonight because the city currently has a moratorium on solar until these regs are in place. I don't want to delay that any more than we have to. So if there are suggestions, revisions, Angelo and myself will keep record of that, and then that's what would move forward to City Council for public hearing next month. We did give these, a draft copy of these regulations to OPPD. You have Ms. Valentine here, am I saying that correctly? Ms. Valentine here tonight on behalf of OPPD, she's provided a handout to you. She's going to go through that. I appreciate the fact that she's putting her requested revisions in writing. It's just easier as we go through the document. But we did give that document to OPPD. She saw it before you folks did, so obviously, we wanted their feedback as well. So with that, let's go ahead and do the public hearing. So, um, obviously, we wanted their feedback as well. So with that, let's go ahead and do the public hearing and start the discussion.
All right.
Save the best for last on this one. I'll get signed in in a minute. Thank you, everyone, for your time tonight. I'll be brief. Um, I worked on several different regulations in Saunders County, Cass County with Mr. Palm, and, uh, Sarpy County, Burke County, and with several solar developers. I've also worked on the, um, Platteview Solar Project that's going in UTN Nebraska. So I have recently had a lot of experience in solar. I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing, but, um, I, along with the team of our engineers, walked through your, um, proposed regulations you have here. I'd say you're 98% of the way there. This is what they all look like, all of them that we work with anyway. Um, Tammy's done a great job, um, and the planning staff's done a great job. So I just, um, wanted to put these in front of you in the old quick and dirty way that we used to do in the legislature, which is just mark it up with a pen. And I'm not gonna go through all of them. I'm just gonna point out the ones that you might have questions about. So if you're looking at your page numbers, on the bottom of page four of nine, um, I crossed out sits on the ground or has its own foundation. And the reason I cross that out is because sometimes solar panels are pile driven into the ground or they have different racking systems that they sit on. And it's not necessarily that they will sit on the ground. So when I conferred with the engineers, we thought it'd be better for you guys to just take that little piece of language out to offer yourself flexibility if you do have a developer that comes in and wants to develop solar. So that, that was taken out just for flexibility. On the next page, five of nine, you'll see anywhere where it says panels. We had suggested that you change that to conversion system, so it would read, um, no solar panel conversion system and down the page like that. Pretty easy. Um, and then the last one I wanted to, excuse me, the second to last one I wanted to talk to you about is on page seven to nine. If you look on section five, towards the very bottom of the page, it talks about maximum height should not exceed 15 feet for utility scale solar. And, um, we would recommend that you guys go up to 25 feet because if anything's built in a floodplain or you have to build your, you have to build your racking system up higher than you anticipated. And you put the panels at full tilt. Sometimes those panels can be 10 to 12 feet tall at full tilt. So then they're 10 to 12 feet plus they're on top of a racking system. So you might get closer to 20 feet. So we thought just give yourself a little bit more room just in case you need it. And so we've recommended 25 across all of the jurisdictions that we work in, and you'll probably, um, see that if you look around in the various local jurisdictions. And then lastly, on page eight of nine, um, there's a decommissioning provision at, um, the, the bottom half of the page. And we would recommend that you put that complete decommissioning of the system, um, at 12 months instead of six months. Because right below it, you talk about if there's no useful life or electricity that's flowing for a period of 12 months. So just to be consistent, we would just recommend that you put that at 12 months. And then also, sub one underneath there is at six months, and we would recommend that you put that at 12 months as well. And those are the extent of our substantive changes that we would offer. Um, we're happy to be a community partner and provide expertise on this. We, we did it for all these jurisdictions when they asked us, um, whether we had anticipated projects there or not. And we're happy to continue to work with Tammy and her staff to do that if you need anything else from OPPD.
All right, uh, seeing no one else for public hearing, I'm gonna close the public hearing and turn it over to the commissioners.
Mr. Chair, I might suggest that due to the amount of discussion we might have, it'd be a good way to organize it. Go it, go through it page by page and just take Planning Commission comments page by page. So, uh, staff can make note and we can kind of do our discussion that way.
Okay.
I guess we can start on page two, which is kind of the definitions. I don't know if anybody had anything to offer on page two.
I would just note that the definition for solar conversion system has three different components, which I think is why our person who just spoke at the hearing is suggesting we convert all those. I'm in agreement with her changes as to why she's doing it cuz it ties in with the definition.
Okay.
One comment, if I may, on, on page two. On page two, on definitions of the solar conversion system, um, towards the back end of that, I think we need to pick up that, um, solar conversion systems, just in general. And, and if we might, we could ask the OPPD expert as well on this, is that, uh, that would also include any storage devices as well. And so I would propose that a modification to the wording set and/or supplies electrical energy to a, uh, energy storage device. Uh, some solar panels, depending on how a solar conversion system is designed, there might be storage on the property as well, whether that be residential and/or a commercial application. And so I think we need to factor in storage as well into the definition to make sure that's allowable, rather than come back at a later time and realize that storage devices do exist. And my understanding is that utilities in the area are already considering either experimentally or, or limited amount of storage devices on a commercial application.
So do you have a specific language, Mr. Jacobson there?
Uh, yeah, I would, uh, I would propose at the very end of the sentence there, it says, uh, convert solar energy to a form of usable electrical energy and/or supplies electrical energy to an energy storage device. And then storage, energy storage device will leave open ended because that could be any number of, of definitive things at this point.
I will note that, uh, Mr. Jacobson so kindly provided staff and the chair with his cheat sheet of his recommended comments. So again, that makes it very helpful when you guys make a motion about your recommendations. So we, we do have all that language.
My apologies to the other commissioners who are not sending it out to, uh, Tammy to send to all the commissioners. I was, uh, trying to save some energy and some paper by not doing so, so bear with me.
All right.
All right, there's nothing else on page two. Uh, page three.
No comments.
No comments?
No comments.
Go to page four.
I guess just one question for staff. What is the title residential and individual mean?
Uh, yes, I forgot to point that out. So as you can imagine, we've had about 300 different red lines of this document. So that was residential was inadvertently crossed out. So what it really probably should say is residential and commercial solar conversion systems. We got a little overzealous with this strike through.
So, so for the record, you're saying residential and commercial solar conversion systems?
Yes, and we would, we discussed this with Mr. Jacobson. We propose to take out individual just cuz that's confusing. So it would say residential and commercial solar conversion systems.
But isn't 807 the commercial side?
Yeah.
I was thinking 806 was residential and then 807 was commercial. I just wasn't sure what the difference was between residential and individual.
You're right. We can take that out, um.
So instead, just change it to residential solar conversion systems?
I guess if I have a egg zoning and I have a barn on it with no residents, can I put up a solar panel? Is that what the individual part means? It's like an individual lot that's not commercial? But also doesn't have a residence on it?
I would say that's the intent.
Then I'm good with it as written.
So just take out the commercial part?
Yeah, I wouldn't make any commercial change just because I think that's what 807 addresses on.
Leave it as it was presented to us, residential and individual solar conversion systems?
Yeah.
Sorry, apparently I have a different version. Um, I, I have like four working copies in front of me. Got it.
If you use the OPPD ver- version.
We're good.
That, yep.
Yeah. I got nothing else on that page.
Let's see, I'm looking through OPPD, uh.
Mr. Jacobson has some items, and then, um, I think some of his comments and OPPD comments will probably overlap. There's, there's some proofreading errors. There's some things that we need to add or change to, for clarification.
I think if everybody's agreeable, uh, one of the things that can happen when you convert some of the stuff from Word to PDF is that, uh, some of the abbreviations don't come through. And I think OPPD pointed out, um, to change solar panel to solar conversion system. And I think that should just be a global change if everybody's acceptable throughout the, the entire document. On, uh, page four at the very bottom, uh, definitions, 8.06.02 definitions, number six, solar conversion system, ground mounted. Uh, it's a matter of plurality, a solar conversion system mounted on a rack or pole. And I was gonna say make that pro racks or poles. Okay. Yeah, just, uh, extra.
Mr. Jacobson, did you wanna address your, uh, revisions to number three and number four as, in regards to energy and storable energy?
Uh, I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Did you wanna address your, uh, revisions to numbers three and four in regards to?
Oh, thank you, yes. Uh, on item three, solar collector, uh, device of, or combination of devices. Uh, if we skip down to the third line, we say that it's, uh, electrical energy and that contributes to a structured energy supply. I'm proposing that we say to a single residence, structure supply. Uh, the intent is to make sure that it's just across, uh, one residence property or structure as opposed to a structure that could supply two residential lots.
Now, I guess, uh, how would that apply for if I wanted to put a solar panels on top of apartment building?
That would probably not be individual, but would be commercial.
Okay.
And so then it would fall under the commercial side.
Staff, do you agree with that?
Yes, and then, um, Mr. Jacobson, you also wanted to change retain heat to retain energy?
Correct. Um, a lot of times, uh, looking forward is that solar energy is no longer stored as a passive hot air device in houses. There could be a, uh, the, the latest greatest buzzword is like a Tesla power wall or best individuals battery storage, or it might even be just a Tesla cabled into the electrical system of the house. So I'm proposing rather than to go u-, uh, to change the number four to a, uh, form of usable or onsite energy storage. To take into account that it might be different than, than just energy storage.
And then at the end of number four.
That's what he was just talking about.
Okay.
So to clarify, I think she was also saying on, and.
End of, end of three.
Yep.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Specifically designed to, as it reads now, specifically designed to retain heat. And I'm proposing we say designed to retain energy, which would open it up for chemical storage devices like batteries or, or, or whatever.
I see on the OPPDs that they also noted that on number one, solar arrays, there's a double S, just as a.
Yes.
Note there.
And then page four is where Ms. Valentine pointed out their recommendation is to strike, sits on the ground or has its own foundation.
I'm okay with that.
Okay. Uh, moving on to page five.
I guess question on that 8.0603. So whether a permit is required or not, the third line talks about there's an exception. You don't have to get a permit if you have mobile units or six square feet or less in size of panels. So I'm thinking of like Don Preister. I know he's got a series of pole mounted panels. Does that mean, I guess, do you get around this by just keeping all your panels smaller and you can have multiples? Or is it six square feet aggregate? Or what's the, I guess, what's the goal for the exception versus having to go get a permit?
I guess that's how I would interpret it, and that's what our ordinance says currently. Um.
So I could have 10, six by six and not pull a permit, but if I had one 10 by 10.
Yeah, I think we would have to clarify that if the intent was something different.
And again, I'm, I'm indifferent. I'm just trying to understand what our goal is there cuz obviously permitting brings fees to the city and.
Right.
I assume we're thinking of it smaller, it's innocuous, and we're not worried about it, but somebody could then put in, I guess, 10 of these things and not have to ask permission, right?
Right.
I guess my comment on that is we have a lot of, you know, just solar lights you can buy now, right, that you just, they're the little.
Yard lights.
Yard lights, right? So you gotta exempt those somehow, so.
Agreed.
It's just what's that number, you know, that we're comfortable with?
Yeah.
Again, that's how the ordinance currently reads, but I'm not opposed to any input.
Two by three, basically, you know, nothing too big.
And you could have an unlimited number the way this reads, right? Again, I don't know enough about. The only one I've ever seen is the one I guess Don's got in his backyard, which is a series of pole mounted multiple panels.
I guess, uh, talking on that, I mean, if somebody wants to throw up 100, two by, two by two panels instead of a much more efficient, larger systems, um, would that be, you know, worth it for them? I mean, is there an incentive for them to get around it?
If I'm their neighbor, I'm not gonna be happy about that. That's what I'm thinking about.
Do we do a, uh,
I guess.
A maximum, you know, exemption if it's a total cer- solar conversion over 40 square feet? So keep in mind, this is, it, if you keep reading there, it says that's for devices that include, you know, if it includes electrical plumbing or heating. So if they're tying that into a heat, into their electrical grid, it's gonna require a permit regardless. Right, so I'm trying to think of who would put 20 of these in their backyard.
Without.
Without connecting it to their house, right? I mean, that'd, that would be the thought. I don't see somebody going and just putting 20 of these in their backyard to.
It's a good point.
Charge batteries, maybe, but seems odd. Well, the way I, the way I read this was that you wouldn't need a permit for the solar, but you would need an electrical permit to connect. Correct. So.
I, I had one, one suggestion to that at the, uh, last part of that statement. It says, uh, applicable permits shall be obtained as well as federal and utility permits and inspections. Uh, you know, if it's a significant size of, uh, square footage of solar, I'm sure that there's a permitting application process. It has to go through the local utility for approval. People just can't go out and paint these on their house and plug them into the wall.
I think, I think when you get, if you can come up to the.
Yeah, thank you.
Sorry about that. Yeah, it usually goes through the city or county. And then what we do is we provide the power. So they do the permitting through city or county, and then we go in and hook it up. But yeah, all these panels have electrical hookups on the back of them. I have one at my house that's sitting in my garage. If you want me to bring it down so you guys can look at it, they're about, they're a little bit shorter than the size of the table, a little bit wider. But like I drive a GMC Acadia and I can fit a panel directly in the back of it. So that's, you know, if you think about that kind of space, it fits in the back of an SUV.
Mm-hmm.
How many square feet do you think that is?
I'll, I'll measure it for you and I'll send you an email. I don't know. I don't wanna give you wrong information, but I mean.
So I guess my question to the commission would be, are we okay leaving it as is with Mr. Jacobson's update regarding the permit? So applicable permits shall be obtained as well as federal and utility permits.
Well, I thought that she was just saying that that wasn't necessary, is how, how I interpreted your. Is there federal and utility? Oh, and utility. I, I guess I assumed that when you went to get an electrical permit to hook this up to your house, that the utility was involved with that electrical permit process.
Yes, I think this was just added clarification, discovering all of our basis. I mean, maybe not necessary, but again, it just makes it black and white.
Okay.
I'm good with all of OPPD's comments, and I don't need to make any revisions. They're on the six square feet. I just wanted to understand it.
Sure.
You're good. We don't, you're not worried about your neighbor putting 20 of these two by twos pole mounted in the, in your backyard or in his backyard?
I don't face that way.
Do you live in a neighborhood with a covenant? Then you don't have to worry about that. Most of us live in neighborhoods with covenants.
Older neighborhood, unfortunately.
You're a lawyer. Get it changed.
We do have a covenant, we do, a covenant that requires every house to have a garbage disposal. How's that for 1960s?
I guess, you know, thinking through this too, if, you know, I'm looking at putting solar on my roof. If all my units are two by two, then that saves me from having to get a permit, correct?
Well, but if you're hooking it up to electrical.
I have to get the electrical permit no matter what, but then I don't have to get. Those aren't mobile units. If you attach them to your house, they're not mobile. Am I, I guess we can define mobile. Or those six feet or less, six square feet or less. So I'm saying if I just buy all my units two by two, I cover my roof with two by two units, do I get to save the money on that permit?
Now, the people that have already done roof mounted, yes. So how that is now, the people that have already done roof mounted, yes, you're coming in and you're getting an electrical permit, so staff is reviewing that for general compliance with the ordinance through that electrical permit process, so. I, I'm not gonna say no to the solar, just based on what the current ordinance has, and again, that's regulated because they have to come in and get electrical permit, so I have eyeballs on it.
I guess my thing is, is it some way that somebody's gonna be able to save money, they're gonna be incentivized, they don't have to get the permit for the solar conversion system, they still get the electrical no matter what.
Sounds like our fees, that little chart with fees.
They do have to obtain a permit if they're putting it on a roof.
No matter what?
Yeah, and, and they have to have a structural engineer's statement saying it's gonna hold it.
Ms. Van Horn previously worked in the permits department, so she would know the answer to that.
When the permits department takes that in, they require something from a structural engineer saying that's gonna hold it, and something from OPBD and, and that permit process is.
In place.
Yeah, on the roof, you won't get by without a permit.
Okay.
But if you're really serious about putting that many solar panels in your house, you should give us a call.
I'm planning on it once the moratorium's over with.
I may have had the next comment on the next section, lot height and requirements. And this is, this is kind of, I'll tell you where I was coming from on this, is the item one, eight point six point oh four, a structure mounted solar conversion system may project four feet into the front yard, six feet into the backyard, and two feet into the side yard of five feet or less. And if the side yard is greater than five feet. And the concern I've got is that if you take some of our zoning for residential, that you could then have a solar panel look on a roof that could hang out four feet over the property, and if you had two identical zoned houses, they would both hang out four feet, and you'd have one or two feet between the houses and the solar panels overhanging. And as a similar example is on the front of a house, if you wanted to extend the solar panels out past the roof line, you would either A, maybe cover the gutters, or B, you could have the solar panels exist so low that it would actually maybe start getting into covering the, the windows, depending on the pitch of the roof. But five foot is a significant amount of, of distance out front. Might create some structural issues to get resolved in terms of, you know, you're hanging a solar panel out there that, you know, is out there, let alone any airfoils things, but, but my comment on that was that the structure mounted solar system will not be taller than the lowest peak of the roof line, and that has to stay basically within the footprint of the, of the roof line, so that you can't overhang the solar panel, a roof mounted solar panel system off on the, the top or the bottom or the sides.
And I will say that's existing language that's in there, and the permits I've seen issued over the last ten years, I've never seen them overhang. So I, I don't, I wouldn't personally have an issue with putting that language in, I don't think it's gonna negatively impact.
I can't recall that I've ever seen any on the driving through the coast or anywhere else, either typically places that have any sort of moisture are not too inclined to wanna cover their guttering system, but depending on how the contractor, you know, Joe's or Sam's or Slide by Night solar contractor comes out and puts them in, we could end up with something like that, so I thought it was important to restrict it. And if the commissioners don't, I would be agreeable to that as well.
Makes sense to me, keep it within the footprint of the roof.
Yeah, I would agree.
So add in the sentence at the end of number one, the structure mounted solar conversion system will not be.
Taller than the.
The, the lowest peak of the roof line.
Yeah, and then I think add that, and, and basically, I would modify that may project four feet, I think all that should be stricken, and just say something like the solar conversion system must be within the footprint of the roof line.
Well, but do we have two different things being covered here? In other words, this could also be pole mounted, right, on the ground?
Yeah, that's, that's very true.
So it's the same ordinance for both kinds of structures?
Well, could we just call out, uh, roof mounted structures must be within the footprint?
Yes.
Yeah, no, item two there, Mr. Ackley, to your point, says a ground mounted solar conversion, so that may be the paragraph to address you're, you're concerned about.
Well, I'm wondering on structure mounted, that we're assuming that it's roofs, and you can hang solar panels off your walls, off the siding, um, have them so that, you know, they're outside a window that adjusts, and they would project, project two feet, three feet as they tilt with the sun. I could imagine somebody wanting to do that, so I don't wanna pigeonhole us and make a law that it cannot extend past the roof line in those instances. So maybe just add on roof mounted solar panel, uh, solar conversions, it cannot exceed.
Yeah, the, the other thing too, also for consideration is how tall we want the systems to be above the roof line. Right now, we don't constrain them above the roof line. So theoretically, you know, you could come in and put, if you wanted the last kilowatt of power, and these things have a certain economic size to them, you know, they're all gonna be three feet by six feet or whatever is the, the current. You know, you could stack them so they stick up over the edge of the, edge of the roof, and I don't know how, on the peak of the roof, and so. One of the questions I had is, do we wanna constrain it to just the peak of the roof line? Or allow it, and I think there is a passive solar mounted system in Bellevue by the high school that is on a roof but no longer active, that is up over the roof line. And that can create, you know, anything from air, aerodynamic issues to site issues, but solar panels being flat and pretty, you know, two dimensional, if they're roof mounted, won't, won't, they'll stick up at a plane. And so, you know, you, people put them on the back of their house, somebody from the street will see the back of the panel up over the roof line. I don't know if that's good or bad, it's an observation.
But I can also imagine that if I wanna fit one more row of three by sixes up there, that I need it to extend one foot above it. Um, or if I wanna hit the exact peak itself, I'd have to pull it a couple inches down so that the racked mounted syst- or the, the structure mounted system up there would not go over that, you know? So you, are you proposing like a, cannot be more than a foot taller than the, the roof, just so that we don't have some extreme examples?
Well, I would be open to that, but I was thinking the roof line itself, and if that meant that there was a row of solar panels short on a house that somebody might wanna put in, I guess, the, their, their roof line, if it's roof mounted, that would constrain it to within the, the shadow line of the roof. So they might have a couple feet on the, the top and a couple feet on the side and a couple feet on the bottom where there's not, not solar cells. Practically speaking, if they're gonna do maintenance on them, somebody may need to block in space anyway, so they may not wanna totally fill up a roof with solar panels. But the peak of the roof line, shadow line was, was part of it, was part of my concern proposing that wording.
You've got more experience, do you find that people wanna? Do you think that that's gonna really infect people if they have to maintain below the roof line? Below the highest peak of the roof line?
Well, usually the solar developers, whoever you're working with, they arrange the panels on that, so you're not below the shadow line, and then OPBD will come in and we do like a Google Earth search of like how the sun crosses over that house, and then recommend placement that way, but I mean, I don't wanna get too deep in on what your guys' decision is, but I personally haven't seen them over the roof line like that, ever, I don't know if, Tammy, if you've.
No, and that's what I said earlier, I, the permits we've had come through, no, um, they've never been over the roof line.
What is the modern technology, I think of the old ones they used to put on, I mean, they install them and that's it.
Yeah, and these panels now are this, I mean, they're, they're this thick, if they're not already embedded into the roof.
But are they more like the commercial, where they actually follow the sun during the day and tip, or they're just, they're mounted?
They're mounted on the house. That's why we come in and do that study, to see the best way the sun will track over the house, so that we can work with the developer and they know where to put them.
So without to benefit Mr. Jacobson, I see in your language, is there, so was something proposed on that? Or is that a new proposal? If we're looking to do something.
I think we kinda had a new proposal, right, Mr. Jacobson, you were looking at?
Yeah, of, uh, striking the words may project five feet into the front yard, six feet into the, into the rear yard, two feet into the side yard, and five feet or less into the side yard greater than five feet, striking that, and just saying the footprint of the roof. And here again, my mindset is I'm thinking about a roof mounted system, and, and any poss- to head off any possible overhanging, although I, I agree with, with both of you that I don't know that I've seen many overhangs, if any, take place, but.
So we could strike that encroachment language and put the roof mounted SCS must be within the footprint of the roof line?
Yeah.
Okay.
So to Mr. Rich's point, because they can be mounted on walls or other places in the roof, does that need to be addressed?
I think we do if we say roof mounted SCS. We would clarify and say roof mounted SCS, like if it's mounted on the roof, then it can.
So it can't be mounted on a wall? Does, does mounting on a wall need to be addressed, that next to your wall of a house?
How about we leave the language as is with number one, we add a line, another number two, that specifically just says roof mounted in footprint of roof line?
Then I think you have two different, two competing, because then you have an encroachment, but then you go back and say, well, not really, because if it's roof mounted, you can't do this.
Wouldn't the roof mounted, because it's smaller, override the structure mounted?
I think you'd have to further clarify and say. Maybe what we do is combine it all into one and say. SCS, other than roof mounted, may project, and then leave that encroachment language in there, and then clarify roof mounted SCS must be within footprint of the roof line.
Yeah, see, I'm the opposite, if, if it's gonna encroach over the, I'd want that on the roof hanging over, not, if my, if it's a wall mounted, like you said, do I really want four foot sticking out? From my neighbor sticking out towards my house, if it's gonna stick out overhang, I'd rather it be up on the roof where it's out of the way of everybody.
Right, so I guess that goes back to the issue of, do we need an encroachment at all? Again, I've never seen people utilize that encroachment, so I'm, I'm almost questioning whether we really need it at all. It may be antiquated.
Well, if, if it's a, if we were to strike the encroachment, which I think I hear is maybe a proposal, is as they go through the construction permitting process, we would see that would come through the city, there'd be some review, and it could get flagged at that time, I guess, if it was onerous or, or looked bad. And I don't know that the structuralists might catch it too, as if, if it really overhung a lot, they might have some comments that might change the cost equation to say, hey, no, you just shouldn't have that row there because it overhangs too much. If you, if you just got rid of one row, it structurally would be so much cheaper, you just don't wanna do it, maybe that's why we don't see, see it really being much of an issue. Do we see the first one come through and strike it and leave it?
I guess what's the consensus?
I would be okay if it was struck.
Okay.
Part of me thinks technology's gonna keep changing, and whatever we do here is gonna.
Absolutely, I, I mean, yeah, this isn't set in stone, I.
That's what, that's what I'm worried about, is that somebody has a canopy that they install outside their backyard, and that canopy is actually a solar conversion panel that, and I've seen the technology starting to get to that point, now that thing is attached to the house, it sticks out six, seven feet to give you shade in your backyard.
And provides you solar energy.
And provides you solar energy.
Sounds smart.
I would say just leave it as written, it get, it has the encroachments, that you can't go further than that. As Mr. Jacobson said, once you get to the structural element of roofs, most structural engineers are probably not gonna want you to have overhanging off of your roof to that extent, because the load is just gonna pull so hard, um, plus most roofs probably aren't designed to be able to even handle it. Now, if panels get thinner and thinner and we get that happening, we can always revisit it and limit that at a future date.
Guess those of you we haven't heard from, we kinda have a mix of opinions, leave it or change it, anybody else? What's the majority?
I'm up for leaving it.
Okay.
I would say leave it.
Leave it?
I'd say we leave it.
Okay, all right, consensus is we will leave it as presented.
Yeah, item two. Uh, this is a, just a further clarification on this very la- uh, next to last line panel or energy storage device, because we modified the original definition. And then on the very last line, we say, uh, in a required side yard or front yard unless a waiver is issued. And I would propose that we capitalize waiver and say waiver is issued by the board of adjustment. So we know who the appealing, uh, party, ruling party would be on that within the city.
I would agree with that, we have that language in there now, I don't know why it was written that way, because I think that should be clarified too, a waiver is not just an arbitrary waiver from me, um, it needs to be through board of adjustment.
Okay, so the other thing that I've seen, actually have seen popping up, is people putting canopies over their, over their driveways, like Creighton does over their parking lot. So would that fall under this then? Where they would need a waiver from the board of adjustment to do that, I'm, I'm fine with it, I'm just saying that, that's where that would. You know what I'm talking about with that?
If they're putting it on parking lot canopies?
You, you build a couple poles, you stick a, a quick roof and put panels on top of it over your driveway to create.
It's a car, carport with a solar panel on top of it.
We gotta meet the setbacks, and hardly anybody can meet the setbacks, because most people's front yard sits at that minimum setback requirement, we don't ever see that.
So I guess your language here would allow you to go four feet into the front yard, right?
Right.
I know there's a carport up there on the hill.
They probably don't have a permit. Most people who do the right thing and come with the permit get denied because they don't have the space.
But that would be, if somebody has the ability to put a carport in and wants to put panels there, it would just be under the board of adjustment. And it would fall under this, I just wanna make sure. They would need a waiver, because if the carport can be there, it meets all the zoning regulations, so it's just on the roof, it's just like the roof of the house.
That carport, right, cuz that carport has to meet the setbacks, so I think that's not an issue.
Thank you.
Okay, so are we okay with clarifying that the waiver is issued by the board of adjustment? Perfect, okay.
Guess you could do a global search on that wherever the word waiver appears in here. I've got no issues with their changes, OPBD's proposal on page five either.
Okay. Anybody else, page five?
Nope.
Phew, going on to page six. I think OPBD just had one minor change, kind of a proofreading. Mr. Jacobson?
Number seven, solar conversion system, commercial utility. Third line, to supply the converted energy to a community power grid and insert a storage device, or public utility. Public utility was already in there, but basically add the word storage device.
Like we did previously?
Right.
Keeping it consistent?
Yeah.
Anything else, Mr. Jacobson?
Not at, in that section.
Okay.
On permitting requirements, I had a couple comments.
Go for it.
Oh, okay, I thought somebody else had some other, other comments. On permitting requirements, the point number one, the name of the project applicant and operator, add, add, and operator. And on item three, the second line, it says project and proposed total load capacity. I think previously we used the term kilowatts, so I'm proposing we add in kilowatts here in parentheses. Right after total rated capacity, and then on item four, generating, line two, generating capacity, again, storage capacity just for consistency's sake.
Got it. Anybody else, page six? Okay.
I guess question for staff on page seven, so we start.
Wait, hold up, I think Mr. Jacobson has one more on six.
I do, I, I was speed reading at the very top of page six, the operator. Again, it's a consistency, we add in on the last line, solar conversion. Uh, again, it's a consistency, we add in, uh, on the last line, solar conversion system, including energy storage devices, just for consistency. Oh, yeah. And also item, uh, I added items eight and nine for consistency. Item seven says state is the state of Nebraska and so. Uh, I added in county, the county of Sarpy, Nebraska and the city, the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, just two new lines.
And I, we would actually. Probably keep those consistent in alphabetical order, so we can adjust the numbering on those.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm sure city Bellevue would go first.
Got it, alright, anything else on six?
Yeah, they're gonna collectively take your, yeah, thanks. Nope.
Okay, page seven?
So the bottom of page six starts with permitting requirements. And the second line talks about all of these things shall be met and supplied before the conversion system is approved as a conditional use permit. When you get to number thirteen, it talks about a decommissioning plan, I mean, that could be a fairly detailed document for a commercial facility. I can't imagine somebody's actually gonna prepare that when they don't even know if we're gonna approve it.
Okay.
So is the interpretation that it would be like a development agreement? Or it's a requirement before it's finalized, but it's not like they do the full development agreement before they get to planning commission stage? I guess that's the piece I want you to think through on. Again, the reality is you're not gonna put together a decommissioning plan for a facility that may never get approved.
If it's helpful, I can speak to that for you in terms of the timeline, so in Saunders County, we had our conditional use permit passed for Platteview Solar. Um, at the end of May, we just submitted the finalized decommission plan last week. So we had a period of time where we worked with the Bo- Board of Supervisors. And appeared before them at several different points in time for check-in. To make sure that the de- decommissioning plan was where they wanted it to be and then we just finally submitted it, you know, mid-August, so. If that helps provide a timeframe.
After the board and the commission had acted on it.
Yeah, and it was in the conditional use permit that we would have check-ins and that we would come to terms at a later point. I mean, we didn't put a date on it, but we made sure that we kept talking about it throughout.
Did you start construction before the, the, before you finished the plan?
We haven't even started construction yet, we're still submitting, um, landscaping plans. So that's how far out your road maintenance agreements can go, your decommissioning plans, um, your landscaping plans. Because there's always negotiation, right? You get way, way in from your constituents even after public hearings have closed and they want more landscaping or they want, you know, reassurance here or. In the case in Saunders County, the commissioners changed the liability, they didn't want it to be a million, they wanted it to be five million. And so we went with that and we just made those changes on the fly, but once we all agreed, we reduced it to writing and had it signed by all parties. You know, planning, county attorney, all of the commissioners, um, and then Platteview Solar, the, um. The entity that's de-risking that is community energy, so even though OPPD is not a party to that agreement, we have eyes on it and we have a separate agreement signed. As the off-taker of power, we signed what's called a PPA agreement and it locks those, our PPA agreement or any energy. Um, facility, public powers PPA agreement is gonna lock those solar developers in so tight, they're not gonna be able to move. I mean, we, we methodically hire legal counsel to, to go over those kinda things. So that, um, there's very little wiggle room.
So the approval in your example at the board level, they approve a contingent on finalizing the decommissioning plan?
It was approved contingent.
Okay.
Did you wanna add that on here?
I don't think we need to, I just am trying to, so if somebody wants to poke a hole in somebody's process, it got it approved. The reality is they can't come back and make him redo the whole thing because the decommissioning plan wasn't included as part of the package. I guess ultimately it's approved contingent on, that's just something you'll have to think about, Tammy, no different than again, the development agreement.
Right, cause you've got, you regulate it through the CUP agreement, like Ms. Valentine pointed out, it's all put in writing, it's all signed off, it's all approved.
So maybe it would help decommissioning plan as required by the ordinance before the. You know, it's, it's at least gotta be a contingency for the approval or something, but I just can't imagine anybody going through all of that brain damage until they know they're approved.
Um, could we put language, you know, subject to. Something along the lines of subject to timeline addressed in conditional use per- permit agreement or something of that nature maybe, and that would. Cause again, that would be part of the process, so saying, okay, you don't have to have it up front when you submit, but. It has to be ironed out through the process, the timeline of that.
So a decommissioning plan is required by this ordinance provided in accordance with the.
Maybe, maybe we say contingent upon timeline as provided in. Conditional use permit?
If you issue one, otherwise you don't care. Cause it's gonna go away.
Upon approval of, yeah, good point.
Yeah, so basically it's after the approval occurs and before you'd actually permit them to go out and start building it.
Okay, so we could add in that language.
And then I'm otherwise fine with the language OPPD is proposing here.
Uh, we should talk about height, so you're okay with the height up to twenty-five?
Well, are we gonna talk about number fourteen, the reasonably? For OPBD?
Gotcha.
Um, I would default to someone more familiar with legal than me, but is reasonably a word that we like to?
Mm-hmm, I sprinkle that in every document.
Attorneys like that word. The only reason that language is that way is because we have that elsewhere in the ordinance about other items, so it, it was just carried over from that, I don't have any. I'm not opposed to adding reasonably if the commission isn't.
I'm okay with that. Above, uh, OPBD's comment on number twelve, uh, we have any specific, uh, requirements of, of the appropriate, uh, fire district? And, uh, I was wondering how everybody felt about throwing in any utilities, specific requirements of utilities as well as appropriate fire districts.
I say local utility or just uti- okay. So that would read any specific requirements of the appropriate fire district and local utility.
Correct.
Is everyone okay with that?
On twelve, yes.
Yes.
And like the chair, I had a question on the fifteen foot, twenty-five foot.
Is everyone ready to talk about height?
Well, I, before we go there, can we go back to the decommissioning, how is that going to read now, number thirteen?
Decommissioning plan is required by this ordinance and contingent upon approval of the CUP.
And if it's helpful for everyone to know this, usually in these types of setups, so there is state statute on decommissioning that requires it on these types of. Um, contracts and then with any of the land use agreements with any owners who would lease their land for solar, there's decommissioning agreement in there. And then there's the decommissioning agreement for the, um, conditional use permit, so you're really protected at about three different layers, if that's helpful for you to know.
Okay.
And then on number fourteen, just to clarify with the word reasonably, I can see there being a difference in what two entities consider reasonable. Yes, I know, it provides the vagueness then. So, I mean, as long as the city doesn't have any objection to that, I.
I think reasonable intends a meeting of the minds, right, you can argue it both ways, but like what typically happens in this is. You can get bogged down with a lot of requests that really don't carry the project any further and they're just requests because. People sometimes get upset about these kinda things, right, or you're not, not everybody is on the same page with it and so reasonable. The way that we're talking about that there is, you know, just don't put us over a barrel to dig deep on engineering studies and spend hundreds of thousands of dollars. If it's not really needed, just a conversation around things like that, if it's needed, great. We'll do it, the solar developers will do it. But not if it's not needed.
And I would think ultimately, this is a CUP process, so. If there's a disagreement, that also gets aired out through the public hearing process and ultimately city council could say, hey, we wanna see A, B, C, and D.
Yeah, and we do that all the time, it goes back and forth like that in front of the public bodies in the open meeting.
So. I don't think we're ever unreasonable. But, I mean, if, if there, if that came to play, I can see that's where that would be. I mean, city council could then say, well, yeah, we do wanna see that study before we're comfortable issuing a CUP.
Most of it's fighting over six-foot trees versus two-foot trees. Really, that's what it comes down to is landscaping.
Okay. Thank you.
The other, the other thing I wanted to point out, Mr. Jacobson, I think on eight point oh seven, point oh five. Number one, you wanted to point out at the end of that sentence, it would say. Any structural, electrical, mechanical components of the solar conversion system shall conform to the relevant and applicable local, state, and national codes. And standards in effect at time of permit approval, just to clarify. I mean, that's how we interpret it now, but that would again, just be a point of clarification. If something changes in between the time a permit application hits the permit office and. Approval of the city staff, then we would go by what was.
Yeah, the, the time duration for a construction of, uh, some of the larger commercial solar facilities is more than, than say the construction of a house and so. A lot of the city's design standards change every two or three years, it might be possible for a commercial applicant to get stuck in between it and then. Be into the construction process and then. There'd be a discussion as to whether they were obligated to the new standard that got put into effect or the old one that they started the project on, so I'm trying to. Trying to ensure the contractors know that they can s- continue to work under the one that they started on for the duration of the project.
Yeah, grandfathered in.
Basically.
Yep, got it.
Okay, is everyone okay with that?
With that on number one, um, my question is on number two. Which is, uh, shall comply with the NEC and applicable local code, I know there's a few times where. City Bellevue may be lagging behind what NEC is, where we have to adopt it, is that gonna be an issue on those times?
I had the chief building official look at this, this is the language that he was comfortable with, so.
Enough for me.
Right, I'm gonna defer to him, um, I think also to Mr. Jacobson's note on number two, we would also add in. Local code in effect at time of permit approval, again, just being consistent with that. Uh, Mr. Jacobson, do you wanna talk about number four setback requirements?
Yeah, um, again, it's a fine point clarification is a minimum, I would add, suggest adding minimum setback, setback for all equipment. And structures required as follows, so there's always some additional equipment that goes around with, uh, say, a commercial solar panel instruction, there might be. Some sort of storage batteries or something or a, a utility building or something like that and all the equipment we're talking about for the entire project should meet the setback requirements. Not just, uh, the solar panels. And so to add for all equipment and structures as requirements are as, go from there.
Thoughts on that? Everyone okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, alright, now should we talk about height?
Height.
Um, I, I will say, here's how we came up with that, it's. That was taken directly from Sarpy's code, kind of as, you know, we knew it'd be a point of discussion. Their full section reads, shall not exceed fifteen feet in height at max tilt. Exceptions may be granted within the conditional use permit, I think theirs says special use permit, cause that's what they use. In cases when topography, floodplain, or other natural elements of the natural landscape interfere with the ability to meet the foregoing height restrictions.
I like that language.
Yeah, and we're fine with that, when I spoke earlier, that's what we were talking about, was if there's differences in topography or floodplain.
Sure, so we would just say, again, I think theirs was a C- an SUP, which we don't have a special use, so we would say conditional use. Um, but yeah, let's, let's talk about that, if, if everyone's okay with that, that has the exception built in. We can just change it to be consistent with what Sarpy has.
I like that language.
Another thought I had, what if you just make it match the zoning districts maximum height requirements for buildings?
Because we don't have a maximum height requirement in ML or MH. It's based on gross floor, uh, area and off it, so you could have a hundred and fifty foot tall.
Sure. So I just, we, on one lot, you could have a building that's forty foot tall and we're restricting their solar panels to be fifteen, that's, that's kinda where my brain's at, right? Why would you make?
Unless they mount them on the roof of the building.
Correct, yeah.
What is the industry standard, again, I think of these solar farms where again, it follows the sun, how big are these things?
Um, the panels on the racking system?
Well, in terms of once they mount them and stick them on there is fifteen feet, kinda the industry standard?
Yeah, I mean, you're gonna be right around fifteen feet because the poles, you pile drive eight-foot poles, they go down a few feet and then. They're, when you stand next to them, they're kinda like right about here and then when they're at full tilt, they're, they're usually about. At full tilt, they're probably like right up here where the ceiling is. Ten feet maybe, I don't know, yeah, is that about ten feet? We just, you, we just wanted to account for topography and it sounds like the Sarpy language does that really well, so that's. Goal accomplished, right?
Okay, if everyone's okay with that, we'll incorporate that language I read into the record from Sarpy as far as height.
But leave it at fifteen?
And leave the fifteen.
Leave the fifteen, but allow for the exception.
Yeah.
Based on.
Topography.
Topography, floodplain, other natural elements of natural. Okay, anything else on page seven? Okay, let's go page.
Does the zoning code allow like barbed wire, that was my question, like I see barbed wires in here, is it realistic that? You would have, I mean.
Sorry, where's that at?
Number six, it just talks about, it has to have a boundary line fencing. Well, it talks about barbed wire, I don't know.
Yeah, good catch, we don't allow barbed wire in city limits, so.
Never used it.
I was gonna say.
Um, to be consistent with, uh, our current ordinances, we should strike the barbed wire, just have the chain link.
Yeah, we've never used it, we only use eight-foot chain link.
Yeah.
Perfect, good catch, Mr. Ernie.
Is commercial allow barbed wire?
No, nowhere in city limits allows the.
Why does your bus barn have barbed wire?
That's exactly what I was thinking when you said.
I didn't hear that. Alright, let's go to page eight.
To keep our drivers in, we keep losing them.
Alright, page eight.
What is the, we talked about about eight lines down, the vegetative buffer? How far apart are the trees, we seem to be getting hung up on minimum height of six feet to start with. Maintain at a maturity at a height of eight feet, which I think we need at a minimum height, I guess, if that's the intent. I don't think you're gonna keep cutting the tops of the trees off to keep them at eight feet.
Well, they might just admit, so they don't block the solar panels.
Boy, if, if, uh, if we got the trees on the outside of the fence in a setback, I would think they're. I don't know, I guess that's a discussion point then, what, what's the goal of the? Six feet, but not to be higher than eight feet? I would think we'd be happy with thirty-foot pine trees on the outside of these perimeters once they get grown.
Yeah, it's just to block the fence is the reason why, you know, they put the trees on the outside of the fence and then you have a setback on the inside of the fence. And the first thing you have is the solar panels and then the inverters that run utility scale solar on the inside of the project. So they don't sit on the outside, they, it's, you'll see panels first around the perimeter.
So again, Tammy, we're talking about height of trees, what about how far apart, is that a different part of the regs or is that how a buffer is defined? Where we get the spacing of them or do we need to be thinking about spacing between trees?
Yeah, and other parts of the ordinance for other items, we talk about spacing in reference to a buffer yard. Um, I'm trying to remember where this specific language came from, Angela, do you remember if it was Sarpy County?
I do not.
Okay, um.
Seems like a true buffer, we'd need a spacing requirement as opposed to. Just a height requirement, cause you could plant one tree and say, hey, I got my tree and it's six feet tall.
Sure.
And then I think the line that talked about it, maturity just has to say a minimum height of eight feet, if we're actually worried about. Somehow it has to grow at least two feet, but it's gonna keep growing, I would think. And I'm otherwise good with OPPD's comments that they proposed?
Good with striking public road right of way?
Yeah.
Okay.
And what is the reasoning behind that?
Striking public road right of way, typically when you're putting buffering all around a project, just industry standard is you don't usually put it on the public right of way.
Okay.
And then sometimes through the conditional use permit, entities will come back and say, no, we actually want it there if you wanna move forward with this project. We've seen it changed sort of mid-flow through the project.
Okay.
I would think security wise, you'd almost want it, wouldn't you?
Well, it just depends, I mean, if you want the true answer, the solar developers don't wanna pay for them. We don't, we're not the solar developers, we're just getting the off put, so it cuts into their landscaping cost. We don't, we're not the solar developers, we're just getting the off put. So it cuts into their landscaping costs if they've gotta put the more trees that they put, the more it cuts into their landscaping costs and profit, right? So. Some jurisdictions say, we don't wanna see it. Put them all around there. Saunders County said, we don't wanna see it. So we'll let you go from six-foot trees down to two-foot and three-foot conifers, but just plant them everywhere. So it's just, and that was all through the part of the conditional use permit process where those things changed, even though in regulation, it says exactly what this says, six to eight feet. Now, I will tell you, on that project, they spaced them twenty-five feet apart, cuz when they grow up, they don't want them growing into each other and killing each other. But, um, like in Burke County, they did two rows offset. So they spaced them apart twenty-five, thirty feet, and then they had to have two rows offset to make sure that you don't.
So just for, yeah, just for reference on that, um, in our buffer yard language and our landscaping ordinance, where a buffer yard is required, we say at least one row staggered to space not to exceed one-half the mature spread. So it would depend on the species that you're planting as far as spacing, cuz you don't wanna obviously overlap anything, and you wanna have enough space at mature spread.
So we're covered in terms of something you can point to when it's.
Well, but if, if that's what you're looking, I think we should also clarify here if that's the intent, um. Because this language wouldn't apply to that under how it's written necessarily. If we wanted to be specific, it should be specific in this section.
Why don't we do that? Say, the evergreen vegetative buffer shall be spaced in accordance with, and then you could cross-reference your other reg. Unless you wanna repeat it all. I guess I'm six lines down.
Yeah, we could.
The evergreen vegetative buffer shall be spaced in accordance with, and then reference.
Got it.
And then could continue with, and shall be a minimum of, so we got spacing and you got height.
Yeah, that'd be section nine point oh five for reference. Sorry, I was writing, and then what was the last part of that that you said, Mr. Ackley?
Well, then it would continue with and, and then it continues on there with the, shall be a minimum of six feet apart. In other words, we'd have the spacing, and then it'd be followed by the height.
Shall be a minimum of six feet in height and maintain a maturity of a minimum height of eight. Is that what you said, add a minimum? Okay, got it. Any other feedback on that, or is everyone okay with that?
Good.
Okay. And what about striking the public road right away? Everyone was okay with that?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay.
I had a question on number nine, waste disposal for, ready to move on? Yeah, the, the question I had is, we talked about, uh, we define waste disposal, solid, hazardous materials, not limited to crates, materials, designed or worn parts. Uh, are we construing that to include solar panels, batteries, and inverters as well in that definition? Shall be removed from the site promptly and disposed of in accordance with applicable regulations. During, and I was gonna suggest adding during construction and operation. I guess the question I have is even, even solar panels, as straightforward as they are, they are kinda solid-state, occasionally one or two of them will break, or an inverter will break, or something like that, and is, is our thinking that we want those moved off-site in a timely manner, or they could pile up till the site's decommissioned?
I would think they should get removed if they replace them, otherwise you get.
I don't know how many, typically, I don't know that solar panels fell too much unless something horrific happens.
Typically, like if something was to break, they'd remove it, and they'd wanna scrap it, because there's still salvage value on that. So they wouldn't wanna leave it there, and then the fire district wouldn't let you leave it there, because they've gotta be able to get their trucks in there in case there's a fire. So everything has to be cleared from the land.
So I guess to your point, Mr. Jacobson, it might be good to add it just as extra clarification, not, not necessarily be an issue, but again, we're just spelling everything out.
Yeah, and I had suggested, uh, on the second line where it says damaged or worn, uh, solar panels, batteries, and then comma, parts, as well as other uses oils, a- acids and lubricants. And at the very last, uh, sentence, uh, during construction and operation.
Okay.
Cover both. And on number ten, I had kind of a similar question is, uh, for some reason, uh, it looks like the, the overwhelming majority of a lot of the groups that have enacted these regulations say onsite power lines ought to be buried where reasonable, but it shouldn't apply to fiber optic communication lines. And I am curious why one and not the other. Uh, fiber optic lines are probably roughly the same diameter as some power cable, or low voltage power cable, so why not bury them all or let them all above ground?
I think that, I'm gonna guess, but I, I burying power is safer, burying fiber optic is more expensive for fixing. I mean, when your Cox line gets knocked down by a tree branch, it's real easy to fix.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't disagree with you. Burying power can, can be relatively expensive compared to overhead, but there again, there's a security feature involved in something that's infrastructure and having it underground as well. And so, but my observation is from a site viewpoint, for the general public going by a, a small overhead power line, looks about the same as a fiber optic line from appearance sakes anyway. And I was, I was a little surprised to see some of the other groups, uh, that have put these sort of proposals out and actually differentiate between the two. And so I don't know what everybody's opinion is on that. You conceivably could have a commercial solar field where all the power lines are underground, and yet it would still look a little burdens- nasty because of fiber optics if they were used in any great extent into the, into the facility. I don't know if every inverter or controller to tilt every panel has to have a fiber optic connection to it, but that starts turning into a little bit of a web. Anyway, that was my thinking was why one or, or not the other. I don't know what, if OPPD has any knowledge of what common construction is on those.
No, not on fiber optic. The first sentence there, I can look into that for you and get you an answer, but the, the first sentence is what we're dealing with is where we built, we put them underground where feasible. I mean, the only thi- thing I can think of that would have any like nexus to what's going on, just sort of at a global level, is like with broadband, um, trying to run broadband into more rural areas, it is cheaper to put it on the poles.
Sure, I agree, yeah.
And if they need broadband in that particular area, because they're at twenty-five, three, or they're lower than what the federal recommended standard is, it is cheaper to run it to, um, poles, and if there's ARPA money in a city or county to do that, they might just opt to do that. But what, I mean, that would mean that a solar project would have to be up by December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-six, because that's when the construction on any kind of like broadband ARPA projects would run out. So that's the only thing I can think of that would have like application right now, but I can definitely check into the, um, fiber optic connection for you and get an answer.
Yeah, it, it's a pretty fine point, but at some point, when you stand thirty feet away, you know, cable looks like cable.
Yeah, I guess, uh, you're, uh, you're focusing on kinda the aesthetics on it, I'm thinking about the cost on it, um. Fiber optic also upgrades a lot, you know, everything just going, you know, cat six, and you're gonna go cat, you know, bigger and thicker. Um, if you're gonna bury it, it adds a lot more cost.
Yeah, you'd have to put interduct in and, and pull it and replace it.
I, I would personally just rather leave it overhead, cuz fiber optic, yeah, you, you, if you're gonna get serious, it's gonna be thick, but you're not gonna have a whole bunch of, it's not, I don't think it's ever gonna get too busy unless we have a massive solar farm, which is a whole other discussion. Um, and reducing the cost on that, along with allowing it to be upgradable. I would, I would leave it as is, and maybe my comment was actually to remove the word fiber optic connection, just put communication connections so that it's not specific to just fiber optic, if there's other technologies that are around.
Um, that, that's a good point, Eric. I think that, uh, you know, we're seeing a lot of movement to encrypted, uh, point-to-point inside facilities.
Dave, you got any comments?
I think I would leave it the way it is too. If you go down and look at your local utility companies and stuff, um, there's a huge, huge cost difference, and that's why you see a lot of overhead lines. And, um, but I, I think I would probably leave it the way it is.
Okay. I guess, got a little Leland, did you wanna leave it as is? Do you wanna?
I'm fine with as is.
Okay.
Page nine.
Well.
The twelve-six month thing.
I, I don't. Yeah, I guess I don't have any huge issue with that, if the commission doesn't.
Part of it probably is gonna depend on how big a facility they put in, which you could make it specific as part of the CUP. If somebody said, hey, I actually need eighteen months, cuz this thing's huge, we'd make it eighteen, right? But if twelve's a minimum, at least we got a minimum.
From construction, I'd rather put twelve than six, because if, uh, the useful life comes in November, then you're gonna be removing all that stuff between November and April, middle of the winter outside. I'd rather give twelve months.
I don't have any issue, as Ms. Valentine pointed out, you know, we use twelve months down below to talk about end of useful life, so it probably makes sense to make it consistent. Mr. Jacobson, did you have a clarification point on that?
Um, decommissioning?
Yes.
Um, there's at least a possibility that, uh, uh, some sort of commercial solar installation or utility size particular might see some sort of partial decommissioning. They might decommission part of it, some of the inverters go obsolete, maybe some were replaced on a maintenance cycle. And I was, uh, pondering that and thinking, uh, where we have wording on the second line, this is the conversion system shall at its expense, uh, or complete decommissioning, should say partial or complete decommissioning of the system within twelve months.
Anybody opposed to that?
So what the, what this would allow is that, that if for some reason, part of the facility became partially decommissioned, they'd have to follow through with the decommissioning process for half of the half of the site. They just couldn't leave, they couldn't take half the site offline and leave it for thirty-five years until till the rest of the second half of the site came, came out of service. Okay.
Okay. Page nine.
This was my favorite page.
Because it's page nine, or?
Cuz it says liability.
Anybody have any issues on page nine?
My question is on number five, we say six months there, so, so, um.
Yep.
The way I read this though, is is the first part of this is the owner or operator of the commercial utility system. Number five is then actually the property owner, so that would be like property owner is a farmer, they're right, they lease it to a company that comes in and puts it in, that company doesn't take it out, then we're putting responsibility back on the property owner, the farmer, whoever to take it out. We, we would give them additional year, or would we only wanna give them six months? That's just my question.
You're talking if the, the, the owner of the SCS actually just kinda says, eh, see, we went bankrupt and buy, so.
This makes the landowner responsible, then we only give them an additional six months. So do we wanna up that to twelve, or everyone okay with six months?
They would have twelve months from the time there's no more power generated. Then the operator have twelve months, and then you have six. I mean, I think by then you give them two and a half years, I think you leave it at six, but I just.
I'd just leave it at six, cuz that, that full first year, you're gonna know right away if in that year that the SCS is actually starting.
Anything else on page nine?
Are, is the city good with one million, I assume? She just made a comment that they were five million somewhere, right? Saunders County or something, are you guys?
We were comfortable with one million.
And theirs says one million in their regulations. They just changed in the CUP. The CUP governs, you're right, so that's where all the changes get made, if you want a project to go forward.
Yeah, I guess if they have a fifty million dollar project, the CUP can up it.
Okay.
Fair, if, uh, nobody else had any other comments, I'd like to, uh, make a motion.
Please do.
Okay, uh, before I do, I'd like to thank, uh, OPPD for hanging in there as our public participant tonight and, uh, making great suggestions on this documentation, as well as all the commissioners and staff for their time. I'd like to make a motion to approve, uh, amendments to, uh, section two-two-two definitions, uh, light manufacturing and various other uh, definitions, including our article eight supplemental regulations for regarding solar energy. I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval as presented, including all of our discussions and modifications tonight.
Motion by Jacobson?
I'll second it.
Second by Cutzworth?
I guess just as a discussion item, Tammy, do you give a red line then to city council, or what's the next steps? What do they see? Or were you just revise the?
I'm glad you asked, cuz I was going to, uh, explain that process, so Ms. Valentine would know. So what we will do is um, we will provide our red line to city council, and the memo where we'll kind of highlight some of the changes that were discussed at here. Um, again, you know, a lot of them were not major, other than a few fine points. We will point that out in the staff memo. The ordinance that moves forward is the clean copy that will move forward with the recommendations here tonight. So, Ms. Valentine, the timeline will be public hearing for that will be in front of city council, not till September twenty-first, but um, you will see that ordinance on the city council agenda as a first reading September seventh. Um, we're gonna have a really tight turnaround, because, um, that city council agenda comes out next Wednesday. So by next Wednesday, that will be online. So you, everyone will be able to see the clean copy of the ordinance that will be for public hearing on the twenty-first.
Great, thank you. And if it's helpful, if you don't mind, I'd like to send along some information from OPPD on solar, and I can send it to Ms. Palm, and she can distribute it to all of you, just for educational purposes.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for the opportunity to be before you this evening.
And then Tammy, do you have a copy of the, what she provided us, just since it is, we should put it in the record?
Yes, I do. Yep. And it will be made part of the record, it'll be put in our permanent file.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we have a motion?
All voted yes, motion carried.
Most efficient Diane has ever been over there.
All right, item four A, current business, item four A, planning commission.